We'll call the meeting to order. It's 7:02 and I'm joined by my colleagues, Mr. O'Leary, Mistress Dudo, Mr. Walner, and Mrs. Gonzalez, and we'll start with the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so our first order of business tonight are the minutes, approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to approve the June 5, 2020 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
I have a motion by Mistress Dudo and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez. And Chair, and Mrs. Gonzalez said aye, right? Your audio is...
I apologize, but...
Oh, we can hear you now.
You might be hearing that in the back.
All right, okay, and Chair is aye, so that's unanimous. And the June 9, 2020 meeting minutes?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the June 9, 2020 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mistress Dudo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mistress Dudo.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez. And Manu Pelley is aye. And then I think one more set of those minutes.
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to approve the August 17, 2020 regular session meeting minutes as written.
Second.
Great. Motion by Mistress Dudo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mistress Dudo.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez. And Manu Pelley is aye. And thanks Jane for getting those back on our radar too, by the way. It's been a bit. Okay, and our next order of business is Board Member Reports. Mr. O'Leary.
Just that the Water and Wastewater Committee Subcommittee had met a couple of weeks ago. We're going to be meeting again this Thursday to go over information regarding the chlorination treatment plant and the bids that came in, which were a little bit higher than anticipated. And we have our consultants looking at the rationale reasons why, and we're considering whether or not we should be recommending to the administration that they go back out to bid on those after you get some more information. So that'll be this Thursday. Excuse me. Other than that, nothing further, Madam Chair.
Great. Any, any questions on that? Was it really, I have one then. Was it related to COVID-19? That it came in higher?
Well.
Oh.
I don't believe so, but we don't know for sure. Apparently there's a lot of activity out there. Some of the bidders which are eligible from the state list to bid are very busy at this particular time. It appears as though someone threw it out there and hopes it sticks, but I don't think we're going to be recommending that this particular time.
Okay.
But I'll let the administrator elaborate.
All right. Mister, oh, I mean, I was just curious about that. I wasn't sure. Now maybe they're busy with other work.
There's no audio.
Oh, we seem to be having an audio. Can anybody hear me out there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so it seems like the issue may be related to the telephone. Those who are called in by telephone only. Jane cannot hear us, nor can Ms. Doherty.
Oh, I thought that was Mrs. Doherty that was saying that she can't hear.
Maureen, can you hear us?
She's on mute now, I think.
Jane, can you hear us? It's showing me that she's speaking, but I cannot hear her.
Need for short minutes.
I'm going to ask her to try to log out and log back in.
Is there a problem with the audio?
Maureen.
I can't hear anything at all.
Maureen, can you hear us at all?
So someone else I know who's on here by phone, I believe, just said that they can hear us.
I just texted both Jane, and I can keep the minutes for a little bit while Jane is dialing in if, if need be. I just asked Ms. Doherty to do the same, if she could hang up and then call back in and see if that works.
I want to know where Abby is.
I know. Looks beautiful.
Sorry.
We're hiding out in Maine away from COVID.
Hiding out. Did you hide your license plates before you went to the grocery store?
No, I had a COVID test before we came up.
So is that, Maureen, can you hear us now?
Or Jane, can you hear us?
Well, Phil's recording, so.
He is recording.
There will be a...
Phil, are we, anyway, you can message me to confirm that we're broadcasting through North Cam as well. North does his broadcasting.
Okay. Okay, so we are, we good to proceed? I don't think you can keep notes while you're just giving us a quick update on it, but I think, did you finish your update on why the bids came back the way that they did or no? Or is it, did we forget that topic already?
So I can respond to the, to the question, just to add that we're being told that it may be COVID-related, but we also believe that in terms of the bids, it may just be an issue of timing too, meaning that folks are looking to book their work at a certain time, and it may be more advantageous for us to be seeking them, booking their work, you know, either further into or at the beginning of the next construction season. We also have a situation where we have, you know, at least one contractor who we were expecting to bid, unexpectedly does not qualify because of the de-camp certification in place at the time the bid was put out there. So we had a number of factors that really limited the market. And as I think we have experienced successfully in the past, when we have rebid, we tend to get more favorable results, or results that were more, are more aligned, or at least more competitive. And so I think that's sort of the overwhelming consensus at this point. We've had some conversations with the State Department of Environmental Protection about this, that we do not foresee any objection from them in doing so. And so we feel pretty strongly that this is a direction for us to move in, particularly in light of the fact that we have a temporary interconnection that's working right now. This is for construction of a permanent facility. And as we've seen, this, you know, the infrastructure in place is addressing, has been able to address our need. It's not quite as urgent an issue when we get outside of the irrigation season because the water demand goes way down, and as we saw last winter, we don't really, you know, have a need for it for the treatment at that point. So we're pretty confident that we have a strategy to move forward with it, but we'll probably finalize things this week.
And again, our consultants did reach out to those that did bid, Madam Chair, and asked for input as to, you know, why they didn't submit, or what they thought the issues may be with the package that we had. And that input is being taken into consideration. There may be some slight modifications to request proposals that'll be put out later.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on your reports, Mr. O'Leary?
Uh, no, I'm going to hold comment. I'm good. Thank you.
Going to wait till the end for the old and new business?
Probably.
Mistress Dudo. Anything?
Yeah, I was on the CPC call, which I think last week or the week before. By the way, thank you, Mr. O'Leary, for taking the pressure out of me to give an update about something that I'm trying to catch up on, on the wastewater. I tried to take some notes, and then, you know, when you read your notes later and you're like, what did I write? So...
It'll take you more than one meeting.
So the CPC, I mean, the main discussion was about the potential, and Mr. Walner was also on the call, it was about the potential site for retail and housing and whatever else may be put in where the, the jobs lot, you know, Ocean State is there with the Stop and Shop Land is the old one there. And it was really a discussion about what would be palatable to the community, what would make sense, you know, to a developer, and just some, still in the early, I wouldn't say early stages, because I was just, my first meeting, but more of getting to somewhere where you can start presenting it to the decision makers, and then finding a developer that would be open to whatever the town is looking for at that time. Also, there was a discussion of whether or not we could make some modifications to Main Street from a parking situation, because I think parking was like one of the big things of, where do you put it? You know, you don't want to put too much, but if you don't put enough, then you don't get this. So it was, it seems to be a pretty big concern. So that was discussed as well. But I think at this point, and Mr. Walner, when you give your update, you can jump in if I miss something, but it seems like there's a couple of thi, there's a study that needs to get done, which I believe we scrapped last meeting from the warrant. However, the CPC might give their two cents of why we may be able to keep it. So it was just given that, you know, the, the best way to get what you want is to present, you know, so that may, you know, that, that was also discussed. So that's, that's what I have for now.
So is there, is there, so the CPC is entertaining a petition for that site?
Not yet, but they need to do one, there was a study from, it was on actually the warrant article that we took, you know how we're trying to shorten the meeting, but there was, there was one more study they want to do based on, you know, they're still kind of finalizing how many stories, you know, some of those details before they go to the landowners and say, do you want to sell? Do you want to be part of it? What, like, what you want to do? But I don't think they're, they're not, from what I heard, I mean, it's not like at the bidding stage, it's still more of what exactly does the town want and how they want it, and then also taking into account COVID. It kind of changes the dynamic of, you know, retail here or there base. So yeah, I don't think they're at the point of, you know, going out tomorrow and bidding.
So, so is it, would you say that we should probably ask the Chair to come in and explain? Because I don't think the town's actually identified that it wants that parcel.
Oh, no, no, they're not, they're not at that, they're not at that point. That's part of the study. But I'm just saying that that's what was spitballed at the meeting. Now, it wasn't that this is where it's going to be, it's that if it is here, what would it look like? Kind of idea. Unless I'm reading my notes wrong, which I don't think I am. So, and then the discussion would be that if anything ever did go there, and SOR did come in, it could easily be converted. I mean, that was a main question I had. I don't know how simple of a question it was, but it seems like it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, thanks, thanks for the update. And that, anything else?
Uh, no, not now. Thank you.
Mr. Walner, any updates?
Yeah, I'll just say on the CPC thing, it's, it's like, there is a, the big picture is that there's a 50,000, you know, we, we put up $50,000 for them to study that, that downtown area and also that package treatment plant. These are just ideas that we're working out with the consultant to come up with ideas. So we're, we're way, you know, this is way too much premature information at this point for the town. It's not even ready for anything at this point. It's just kind of in formulation, and it's very similar to, the goal is to have this information from the CPC. At the same time, we have the information from the Facilities Master Planning Commission. At the same, you know, all these studies need to come together, and then we look at it big picture. So everybody's just doing their homework. That's the best way to think about it. And, you know, everybody's just doing the best they can with what they have for information, and at some point, we'll all be sitting down trying to sort all this out and see what makes sense. So just to put that in perspective.
So, but Mr. Walner, that study for that area, that whole area was, was, we, I recall we did already approve that.
Yeah, that's, that's the study that's being utilized. And so the consultant is, is creating deliverables, right? So they're, they're creating a plan, which is what that study was intended to do. But it's not, it's not even close to done yet. So we're jumping in a little bit early to, to announce it to the town, I guess is the best way to describe it.
All right. You have anything else to, thanks for that information on that?
Looking forward to the, hearing from Phil Hertz tonight about the rail trail, and, and I think we'll hear from the Martins Pond people as well. And I think those are the biggest things I've been working on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Gonzalez, any reports?
Yes, we had two very successful mask events this past week. Chief Stats ran a, a mask event with, in cooperation, I talked about it last meeting, with the Community Impact Team and, and several others. I helped to hand out masks that day, and we managed to give out masks to 100 cars, if I'm not incorrect. And there were more than one passenger in most of them. So, and then we had to cut it short because of the weather. We were hearing thunder and decided to wrap it up. But for that short time, we did give out, which was great. People were very grateful for them. And then I was in the company of the TA at the Senior Center with Representative Jones and Representative Wong, and Mary Prenney, and Mr. Bracy, Chief Stats. The Twin East Government donated many masks. I don't remember the number. Mike, if you probably remember the number. But there were a lot of masks that they, they donated to the Senior Center, which is great. So very, very positive mask events last week.
Excellent. All set?
Yep.
All right. We're going to, and I'm all set, and that was great. Congratulations on that. We're going to move on to the COVID, COVID-19 update. Mr. Gilberto?
Yes, I'm sorry if I appear to be distracted in the video here, but I'm trying to see what's causing the issue with the, the phone. And I know Jane's been able to join us through the app, so she's actually been able to record the minutes here now. Thank you, Jane. In terms of the COVID-19, as I've mentioned in previous announcements, we're now moving to relying on the state's data, especially with the advent of the metrics that the state's putting out, including the white, green, yellow, red markings. So last week's census, when it came out for the case totals on the state's data, indicated that we had seen an increase of three cases from 208 to 211 cases. Our average daily, daily incidence rate remains at 3.5, which is within the green, the green level. And our total tests administered is now up over 4,000 tests since the beginning of the tracking took place. We continue to monitor this information on a weekly basis, and of course, the public health nurse is monitoring the actual census itself on an ongoing. On an ongoing basis. And we'll continue to provide any further updates.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Okay, any questions for the T? Seeing none. We'll go to public comment. And is there anybody, if you could buy either the raise hand function or the chat function, if it, there's anybody that would like to provide public comment? See, I do not see any. Do you, Mr. Gilberto?
I don't see any visual hands, and I do not see anything in the participant listing either, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we can move on to the next order of business, which is the, the letter to the state and federal delegation regarding the U.S. Postal Service. And this, again, was something raised by Mr. O'Leary in urging us to kind of take some immediate action with respect to this matter. Sorry, folks. All right, so would you like to take it away, Mr. Gilberto?
I'll just give a brief introduction, which is that as a follow-up to the meeting, Mr. Walner has prepared a draft, which is in the, in the meeting packet. I also included some information that was provided to me by Representative Jones the week before last as well, concerning efforts, what appear to be bipartisan efforts at the State House to address the issue of funding for the U.S. Mail and activities of the U.S. Postal Service. So I put a copy of that in the packet, more for the board's information than anything else. I believe that's a letter that was sent about a week or so ago. And but for purposes of this evening's discussion, there is a document on page 31 of the meeting packet, the main packet, that Mr. Mr. Walner had drafted. I'll certainly let, let him speak to it, but I would just add that I've had some conversation with him, and I would encourage the board to consider adding at least our congressional and U.S. Senate delegation to the distribution. So Congressman Moulton and Senators Markey and Warren. And certainly we can decide whether we want to include state and federal administration, meaning the President and the Governor as well. So I hope that was a good introduction through you, Madam Chair. If I could, if Mr. Walner wants to add anything in terms of the draft, it is his, his writing, and I appreciate him getting it to us.
Yeah, I'll just say, I'll just say that, you know, I don't own this at this point, so feel free to slice dice, tear apart. I, I'm not, you know, I, I want it to be good, and if we don't send it out, that's fine too. It's whatever you all decide. I'm happy to take any suggestions. So, you know, I just put together what I thought made sense, tried not to overreach, tried to stay within our lane a little bit, but also, you know, try to anticipate the future, which even this weekend has already come up, you know. So it's up to the board to decide what they'd like to do about it.
Thank you for drafting this. And again, we've had this in the packet. We really discussed this at length the other day, and I think we, the other meeting, the August 17 meeting, I think that some of the members were, I think the majority of us were in favor of sending this, and some of the members wanted to see it, which is why it's being revisited. And it does have a sense of urgency, given the election status and the actions that actually were already taken to remove mailboxes. So I think at last report with the testimony, there was, those were not going to be replaced. So in any event, is there any further discussion the members want to have on this? Mr. O'Leary?
Yes, Rich, thank you very much for taking the time and the thought you put into it. And there isn't anything here that I disagree with. So the only thing is that I would recommend that we expand it to our congressional delegation. The Speaker of the House, the federal Speaker of the House is Senate Majority Leader, and to the Governor, and to, again, the Speaker of the House here in Massachusetts and the Senate President. And again, the only modification that would be required would be the next to last sentence here, where you basically just referenced the letter that Representative Jones and Speaker DeLeo drafted on August 19. And I, but I think we should reference, reference our support for that letter that was, that was written, so that when we send it to the congressional delegation and others, that may be enclosed as an enclosure too. And I think we should sign it and send it off.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Mistress Dudo, any comment?
Uh, no, I'm trying to...
What page is it on?
Page 31, so. It looks good to me. Maybe, I mean, just, the message is clear. My question is, and this is for everyone, when I look at Mr. DeLeo's and Jones's letter, which follows it, which I did see a couple of weeks ago, again, is it just to, I, I feel like where, I feel like the horse already left the barn on this one, and we're just kind of telling them, can you do it again? Again, I, I'm fine with this letter, it's just that, I'm just looking at it, that if I wrote a letter two weeks ago, and then I got another letter saying, hey, can you write a letter about that? I'd say, I just did. So I, that's my question. Like, are we, meaning, this would have been great when Mr. O'Leary first, you know, before we had it, like, if Representative Jones and DeLeo hadn't already wrote it, I think it would have had more impact. But at this point, I'm assuming it goes to our congressional delegation locally first, because they're going to see it kind of, or I don't even know, I, I don't know how the process works. But if they already have petitioned, and I feel here, they, they hit all our delegation at the federal level, I mean, if, if we think it's going to do something, I, I don't think it can hurt, but I'm just not seeing how, you know, I, I feel like it's already been written by people higher up in the political food chain, so I don't see how us putting another one together is going to do much.
So you, in other words, are trying to say that we would stand in support of, in urging the same as the previous letter, and, and we're aligned with the request that's been made in the other letter. So in other words, where it's, it's more of a letter of support, you know, in alignment with the other letter, so.
Yeah, because I, I think it's...
You could certainly modify the language to state that, so that just, it doesn't go unsaid by the board, because the board wants to stand in support of any measure taken to prevent it.
Correct. I mean, you, you put it better than me. You got a few word words. But, but that's exactly it, because when I read the two letters, I think in different ways, Mr. Walner and Mr. DeLeo and Jones are hitting the same point. They're just putting it a different, different saying, they're just using different way to do it. So maybe, maybe that's the best thing to do. And again, I, I don't mind the letter by Mr. Walner. I just feel that at this point, if I received it, I'd say, I'd come back and reply, did you see my August 19 letter? So I just feel like...
He references it in his letter.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know, but, I mean, so, but either way, I think it's...
Maybe we could just modify it, Mistress Dudo, to say that we, you know, we're aligned with the position taken in that, in the letter, in the letter that was sent to August 19, and we also stand in support and urge that, you know, any action in their authority be taken. And the rest of what, I think Mr. Walner's is actually different, to the same points, but very differently worded. So that, I think it's, I think it would be beneficial for us to send it. Is, if you, if, would that make you comfortable making those modifications? Just, just say we're aligned with the, we're in alignment with the, you know, the previous communication?
Yeah, that, that would, yeah, because it gets of my point of more of, you know, we're not trying to cut your legs off with our letter. We just wanted to add our two cents.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, so Mister, I think Mr. O'Leary is going to wordsmith for us. Go ahead, Mr. O'Leary.
No, I'm not going to, not going to wordsmith, because, you know, I, I think what's been proposed here by Rich is, is worded a little bit differently. It includes much of what was in the letter that Representative Jones and Speaker DeLeo put together, and that's important. But I think one thing that I think is important, which is, was that, you know, we could say, you know, you know, we too, we're with you, you know, we're with you too. But again, this is from the grassroots level. And yeah, they're a little bit higher up, and they've set this up, and that's, well, and again, I don't know how many people, I don't know how many, that letter that was sent, that we saw, was sent to other representatives in the House of Representatives to sign on. And I don't know how many signed on and how many didn't, if the letter was actually sent out yet or not. I'm not sure. But that being said, you know, I think what Rich has proposed here says it a little bit differently, and again, makes the point, and also puts them on notice too, that we want them to remain diligent on the issue, you know. And that, and by the way, you know, we know that you agree with our intentions, as exhibited by your letter. So we're acknowledging that we got, got, saw their letter. That letter was not sent to us. It was sent to their colleagues. So we acknowledge that we saw the letter that they sent to their colleagues. And, you know, yeah, we're with you, you know, but we also want you to remain diligent. And again, as I suggested earlier, just in that one paragraph, you know, forward it to our delegation and whoever else we want to send it to, and say, yeah, what they said, you know, we want, we want to sign on too. And again, they do respond, you know, congressional people do track their correspondence. They do track who it comes from. When they hear from the local level, that's important, even as important, or even more important than hearing from the state rep. So I, I think, I think Rich's proposed draft letter here is, is pretty good. And I think acknowledging to Representative Jones, again, I don't know if Senator Taugh was offered the opportunity or signed on either, I haven't heard from him, so I don't know. So I think it's good that, you know, we acknowledge that what Representative Jones and Speaker DeLeo did is a good thing, and encourage him to do the same. is a good thing and encourage him to do the same thing with the President of the Senate. So, but I think it's important to hear...
So making those, those two amendments of, you know, you know, rec, will, will, you know, recognize them, maybe just echo what's in that letter and we're in alignment with that position and expanding the individual recipients of the letter too. Anything, Mr. Wallner, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Right, you know, I can only say, you know, the most novel thing in there is that fifth paragraph. It's, you know, right now, we're focused on the postal office, but what's next, you know? And already we've heard about the intelligence, DNI, I think is the intelligence thing, they're going to stop reporting, you know, they're going to stop giving briefs in the White House about, you know, threats from Russia and Iran and places like that, and they're going to do it in writing, which is a whole different experience. So I'm anticipating there's more than the post office. And that fifth paragraph, you know, if anything, that should be bolded, because, you know, I think there's more coming down the pipe. And, you know, again, that's why I mentioned this weekend, here we go again, right? And there's, you know, seventy days left to go. So that's what's, to me, that's what's novel in this letter, you know? Yeah, I did say it differently, but that fifth paragraph is, is really compelling and we're expecting them to take action, which was the paragraph before. So I'm not, again, I'm not trying to defend it, I'm just trying to say, that is the novel, like, thing that we're saying in this letter that we did, I didn't read in, in the previous one.
Okay, and Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I have a completely, I, I, I am definitely more aligned with Mr. Studo. I don't feel, I don't feel this particular letter, and I appreciate you, Mr. Wallner, drafting that up. But I feel that it is more than enough just to give support to the letter that's already been put out by Mr. Jones, Representative Jones. That's fine if we write a letter of support for that. There's a lot in here that I don't feel as strongly about. And I kind of take a little offense to comments towards the President and his administration removing mailboxes and conspiracy theories, when these things were implemented long before the President, long before the Postmaster, and the Obama administration actually removed mailboxes. So, you know, if we really want to do our homework, this goes further than conspiracy theories. And I don't feel that that letter is necessary and I just feel the letter that Representative Jones is more to my feelings and I would support that. That's all.
Okay, I may have misunderstood you, Mr. Studo, and I apologize. So you are not in favor of sending the letter, I'm sorry, I missed...
No, no, I'm in favor, but I'd rather more of, I just don't want to... I think, and I agree, Mr. O'Leary, from a, you know, the grassroots nature to hear our voice, but I also feel that, I think we're going to get more bang for our buck if we also help reinforce what's already going on at levels just a bit higher. And I'm not saying that, I, I do agree, you know, I guess everything starts locally, but I feel that acknowledging that letter in this one here, I think would make it easier for me to support, because my big thing is more on not what's coming down, and Mr. Wallner referenced it, like, you know, we definitely got to defend against anything else. But my bigger thing was that something's been put in motion and with seventy days left, or whatever it is before the election, and truly, if this issue has to get resolved, it should get resolved the next thirty days tops. I think at this point, letters at the local level, I mean, the, the horse left the barn, like, weeks ago. So I think that we should definitely let our representatives know how we feel, but if they're, I don't know if, does it help more at least referencing that, you know, you guys at a, at this level who are talking more to the decision makers or are closer to them, can you push it even more if you like your format better? But also, let, let us tell you, this is what we also think and we added this on. So that's what I was saying. So it's not that you characterized it right, Ms. Menipelli, it's just more of, I don't think that, I don't know, maybe I just have more confidence than I should that at the, at even this state congressional letter, being this close to Election Day, they got a better chance of pushing this through than, than we, than a letter from us does.
Okay. All right, so I think, I guess would, would you, would the, would, would... I guess would my colleagues be comfortable if, if the town administrator and I slightly modified it to bring it more into alignment with, you know, what Mr. Studo is explaining and then send it out? Could we, because it is a, it should be voted on and one way or the other to be able to send it, but I can, I understand what you're saying and I believe I could, I could revise it accordingly if my colleagues are comfortable with allowing me to do that. Would you be comfortable with that?
I am.
Mr. O'Leary?
I, I just, again, I don't think the, the format of what's been proposed by Mr. Wallner needs to be modified or anything needs to be taken out of it. I just, if anything, just a, that, you know, if it starts with the right to vote, just needs to be strengthened in relation to supporting what Representative Jones and Speaker DeLeo put in and echoing their comments also, basically, basically giving our own thoughts and concerns and then backing up what was said to them already. So to me, I think we need to have a separate voice, not just a, yeah, me too. And again, I think it's important that, that we send the message, it's got to hear from the local level and I, I think it's important. So, so again, I don't know what you, what's in your mind and I, I know you're, you're quite good with your pen in, in editing and moving things around, but again, I don't know what you're proposing for changes. But, you know, I, I think the crux of what's being offered here is important and I think it's important to support what Representative Jones and Speaker DeLeo did. I mean, you know, since, since our last discussion and since that August nineteenth meeting, I mean, we've heard from the Postmaster General in congressional hearings, you know, that he's, you know, he says he's going to put things back the way they were, but he's not going to return any mailboxes, he's not going to return any sorting machines, and, you know, so two very important pieces. Again, this isn't anything that was started back in the Obama administration, this is started, you know, back about four weeks ago, you know? So it's, you know, it's, there's nothing, there's no mention thing in here about conspiracy theories or anything else, this isn't a conspiracy, this is actual occurrences that are taking place right now to undermine people's ability to exercise their votes freely and safely. And it's, I, I think it's important that we be heard.
I think, I think it's important and I just, just want to remind my colleagues, we, Jane's not going to be able to capture people, you know, talking over one another, so let's try to just, you know, basically wait our turn. But I think people's positions are clear and so maybe we would be revisiting this at the next meeting, because I don't think we're going to get a consensus on how it should be worded.
If there's a majority of the board that's in favor of what pretty much was going to be proposed here, then, you know, like every other vote, you know? It's, and again, Mr. Studo, from what I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that he just wanted to bolster our support for what's our, our echo, what's already been written in Speaker DeLeo and Representative Jones's letter.
He did and I offered to do that, but you did not agree with that. You disagreed with it, so now I think we're going to be in a...
That's only if we, it's, it's just ensuring that what's already been proposed here by Mr. Wallner is also included. I'm in my favor.
I don't think anyone said to remove anything and that's why, that was the whole purpose of this discussion, save for Mrs. Gonzalez.
Okay, then I'm okay with that.
It's clear that, that she, she clearly stated she's in disagreement with the contents of the letter. So save for Mrs. Gonzalez, no one is talking about removing anything other than you. So I'm a little puzzled.
With me?
I don't think we have a majority, if, if I'm offering to revise it consistent with what Mr. Studo's saying and you're saying no to that, so...
And maybe I misunderstood what, what you were doing. Again, if you're looking to, to leave what Mr. Wallner has suggested in it and bolster the, the support of the other one, count me in, I'm with you, absolutely.
Okay, and Mrs. Gonzalez, I don't think Mrs. Gonzalez's opinion is going to change in terms of voting in favor of this, but we'll take a vote on that. I don't want to speak for you, but I think you eloquently spoken for yourself as to what your position is here.
I think it's supportive of supporting the, the representative's letter.
Okay, so our vote today, which I think Mr. Studo has a vote in the package, if we can come to a consensus that we'll just do, if you'll, if you'll allow me to work with the TA to slightly modify it with, to be, you know, kind of reiterating what Mr. Studo says, then I'm comfortable and confident that I can do that and I'd ask the board's permission to do that without changing the, the, what Mr. Wallner put in there, other than that one little modification. But again, and Mr. Wallner, I can see...
I was trying to hope that you will wordsmith it, so this is...
I will, yes.
And just to be clear, the town, you know, it, it might have been lost in the remarks, but I never mentioned the President's name, nor did, did I mention any conspiracy theories, I just stuck to...
I did not, I never said that.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard, so just to be...
That's what I heard also.
Let's all, let's all, please, folks, please, I can see you and I know you, this is an important issue for everybody, thank you, but let's, let, let's just do one at a time, it's really tough to, it's tough. So, Mr. Wallner, please.
I was just, I just wanted to be clear that if people thought that's what the letter said, it didn't say that, I don't believe Leanne was saying that, but they might have heard that, so... Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that that is not a letter all, matter of fact, it states, this is not a party issue, this is about our right to vote, that's really what it's all about. So just want to be clear about that. And I don't think, Leanne, it might have, it might have been confusing for people, that's why I'm just trying to clarify now, and I, I know you weren't saying that, so...
I wasn't, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Gonzalez, Mrs. Gonzalez, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, so, I mean, if you are going to wordsmith, the, the big difference here to me, and, and the conspiracy part of it, I'm talking about Mr. O'Leary's board member report last week, mentioning the President and the administration. The, Mr. Jones, Representative Jones's letter talks more to Congress needing to fund what needs to be done. So it's, it's not a shot at the President or the administration, it's, that's not where it goes back to, it goes to Congress needing to fund. So that's where I zone in on Mr. Representative Jones's letter.
Okay, so let's, let's not get into a political debate here. I think what we're looking for is whether or not the board is interested in submitting this letter. I think we've had two amendments raised here and that includes expanding the recipients of the letter and aligning the, aligning the letter with, because at the time, Mr. Wallner wrote it, you know, he did reference that letter, aligning it with the position taken, but without changing any of the content or the timber as, as written by Mr. Wallner. So if we can move on to a vote on this, I do think we have, at least have a consensus on that. So let's, let's move on before we get into debate, political debate, because we have a lot of town business that we have to take care of. So do I have a motion, Mr. Studo?
Yes. So it's the one right here for the letter, right? All right, Madam Chair, I moved to sign the letter to the delegation administration regarding the US Postal Service as amended, right? Based on what you're going to do?
Is it to allow me to sign on behalf of the board?
Well, is it, are we, is the motion, based on what we talked about, as amended, that you're going to do the, correct?
Yes, right?
Okay.
Is that, yes.
As amended by Mrs. Menipelli working her magic to reference the letter.
Well, I do like to write, folks, all right. But Rich kept it to a page, which I think is great. Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Studo. Do I have a second? A motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Gonzalez?
No.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
And Menipelli is aye. Okay, thank you, folks. Now we're moving on to our next order of business, which is, let me get there, I apologize. We're reviewing the auditor's report for fiscal year 2019 and that is also in our packet for this evening's meeting. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and with us this evening via Zoom is the town's auditor, Dick Hengston, as well as the town's finance director, Elizabeth Rourke, and I see that finance committee members, Abigail Harrowbut and Don Kelleher are also present. I thought I saw Dan Mills as well at one point. So thank you all for joining us. If it's okay, Madam Chair, and then the finance director, unless you have an introduction, in the interest of time, I'll just turn it straight over to the, the auditor, just to summarize his, his findings.
That's great, thank you. Mr. Hengston?
Hi, I'm, thank you again for letting me do the audit. Hope you've all stayed healthy during all this going on. I'm, I'm sure you, I saw your agenda, so I know it's packed full, so I'm just going to jump right into the management letter. First comment is bills are warrants for payment. This, this comment really has a dual purpose. It's one to inform you about the mass general law that allows you to delegate the approval of the warrant process, but more importantly, to impress upon you the importance of that approval. When we do the internal control narratives and do our internal control testings, one of the strengths of the system is that the board approves, brought us to the highest level in the internal control environment, approves the payroll and the, the bill warrants. So I just want to make sure that you understand the importance of that and, and to make sure that it's, it's, it's not a cursory review and that at least one member of the board should be looking to be sure that there's an invoice or a bill that supports everything. A lot of times, the boards have been starting, been placing the reliance in their approval based on the signature of somebody else within the internal control environment. And so I think that that's not the way the approval process should go. I know it's a tedious task to have to look at each bill, but I think that that's what makes it the internal control environment strong for that process. Oh, feel free to ask any questions or interject or disagree with me at any time and I'm, I'm more than willing to take conversation on any of these. The next comment has to do with tax foreclosures. The town's general ledger reflects a tax foreclosure outstanding list of about $418,000. There's a detailed list that supports that. The $418,000 on the amount in the ledger and on the lists isn't the value of the property, it's the amount that was in the tax lien when it was closed upon. So this, there's a, there's a lot of process, it's a multi-page Excel list that's being, that's being kept on right now. And there's a lot of small amounts and, and I'm sure that a lot of the parcels on there are, are landlocked parcels that, that property owners said, why am I paying taxes on this? You know, nobody else can use it, let somebody else take it and I won't pay this, this small amount of tax and, and, and it's still going to be mine, it's still going to be usable by me. But, and there's also some land of low value. But, but I think there may be some parcels that have some value on it and that would, would be beneficial in two ways. If you do find some of value and you can sell it, you get the, the value of, of the sale. And in addition, it gets added back into the tax rolls. So it's not going to be a huge difference as far as what everybody's tax bill is, but, you know, you might as well try to get these things back into the tax rolls and see if there's anything, any value in any of these. So that's my recommendation, to, to look at it periodically, though, the list doesn't change all that often. There, there wasn't any sales, foreclosures in 2019, so it's not like every year you have to do a detailed review of it, but I think that periodically, when there's, when there's new parcels going on, you should see if there's any value that, that you can sell them for. The rest of the management letter is is really the status of the prior year findings. There was four findings in in the prior year's management letter. And instead of getting tomorrow, I'm just gonna tell you that they were all.
I just took myself off video.
Mr. O'Leary, we can still hear you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's there's four comments and they were all implemented. So as auditors, that's what we like to see is like we make recommendations and 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 Mike and Liz and the board take them under advisement. And and hopefully implemented. I mean, we they may not always agree, and if they don't agree, that's fine. They can make their own comment as to why they didn't. But in these instances, they they agreed and all the comments got implemented. So that's it on the management letter, and I'm gonna be brief on the financial statements too. But when the financial statements on page one of the financial statements is the opinion letter. It begins on page one. A lot of the opinion letter, which is a two-page two-page letter, is 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 standard language. It tells you what what accounting standards and auditing standards we follow. What our responsibility is in an audit and what your responsibilities are. But the first place any reader like Moody's or Standard and Poor's or somebody that's reading the financial statements. The first paragraph they look at is is paragraph six, and that's the opinion letter. It's always in that place if it's an unmodified opinion. So what they're looking for is is the is the sentence that says, the financial statements fairly present. And and when it says that, they know it's called an unmodified or a clean opinion. And when they see that, they they know that they can rely on the information in the financial statements. So the town has a clean and unmodified opinion on it. So without getting into a lot of detail on the financial statements, I just wanted to say. I know that this has been a really difficult time for all municipalities, both financially and otherwise. I I do. I'm in all town hall every day and I'm talking to people every day. And I know you know what the what the financial impact is and 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 all the other issues that are going on. But I I I think that the town's past management has given it a leg up on this. Because you you have a good, a strong financial position. As of June 30, 30, 30th, 2019, your free cash was 3.3 million. Your general stabilization fund was 2.9 million. And you had three specific stabilization fund, which was 2.7 million. So you have $8.9 million in reserves. In addition to the the 19 and a half million dollars in the sale of the funds. So you put the town has put itself in a position to weather this, to weather the financial downturn that's been occurring. When bond rating agencies, Moody's and Standard and Poor's, ask you about reserves. They're not thinking about pandemics, but they are thinking about downturn in economies. And these are particular, these are just the reasons that they want to know. They want you to have reserves so that you can weather these types of downturns. And and I think that the past practices have put the town in a position where they'll be able to be better than most. Weather this next period of time. The financial statements also includes two reports in the back. They're on page 76 and 78. One's a report on internal control. On compliance with laws and regulations of the town as a whole. And there's also another report on internal control and compliance over federal grants. Laws and regulations that guide federal grants. And both are clean reports. They're unmodified reports, and there were no findings that needed to be recorded on that. I'm more than happy to spend as much time as anybody wants on the financial statements. But I know that you have a lot going on, and I just want to, if anybody does wanna go over it more detailed. They they can give me a call or do a set up a Zoom meeting by yourselves. So at a different time where you don't have a lot going on. And I'm happy to talk at length with you about the details within the financial statements. But if anybody has any questions right now, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, let's see. Okay, Mr. Gilberto has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't mean to take up the board members or anybody else's time. But Dick, thank you for that quick summary of, you know, quite a bit of quite a bit of work on your part and a lengthy document. I just wanted to bring up the issue of the the tax foreclosed land. Would would another alternative be to to transfer care, custody and control? From the tax title custodian to either the select board or for general government purposes? Would that satisfy your your concern on that?
Well, these are tax titles. This is properties that you've already foreclosed on. You own the properties now.
Sure. So. I guess my question is if we were to transition those properties, you know, from, you know, into to straight general municipal purposes, would that achieve your?
Oh, so you're saying that if if there's a parcel that you don't want to sell, that you want to just utilize?
That's correct.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay, because people relate to a further discussion this evening, so thank you.
Yeah.
That would be included in that study you're talking about, right, Mr. Gilberto?
Potentially, yes, yeah.
Oh, okay. Mr. O'Leary, any questions?
Just as far as Dick, your first comment in relation to delegating the responsibility to one member of the board to sign bill and payroll or review. You know, currently, everybody gets, every member of the board gets it. So are you suggesting that that works well or isn't working well or what?
Well, all I'm saying is that, like, I'm thinking that I'm not thinking payroll as much as the the expenditure warrants.
Yeah, bill warrants.
Yeah. Are you getting every single invoice to look at?
No, but we have the opportunity if we want to question it, call and question it, but.
Well, see, but that's that. I I know, like, it's like it's a tedious one, you know, there. In the past, there's always been a a member on the board that came in and looked at the warrant, and not just your board. This is almost everywhere. That there was the one, and they were always called the pain in the neck ones because they came in and they they made they made they sit and look at every invoice. And and they'd say, you know, what about this? What about that? And and although it was a tedious process, it was effective. And if there wasn't a bill there, so so what you are doing by the internal control is. You're making providing assurance that someone else that's in a lower level than you is doing their job.
Would it be would it be more effective or? Let's see, if we want to minimize the risk, to set a dollar threshold rather than looking at every little bill and payroll warrant? You know, so that you can minimize the the exposure to abuse or whatever you're concerned about?
I I guess, but, you know, theoretically, it's it's like. Over time, how much can build up? So I mean, it's better than not doing looking at bills at all. But there's been some fraud in the in 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 the fairly recent past. Which is which was a trigger for for this comment, not in your town, but in a town that.
The town administrator got a little concerned. I just saw this.
Me too, yeah. We all did.
Yeah, it wasn't. I mean, not your town at all, you know. But this comment is in every single municipal audit that I do this year because of a something that happened in a community.
Okay.
Which we may name.
Well, you can probably read about those, but we.
Yeah, I'm sure you could.
So I I I kind of had the same question as Mr. O'Leary did. But in terms of looking at the warrant, in other words, we see what that is, but we don't see the backup to. The itemization that we have. However, we are free and I know I have peppered the finance director with questions when I see something. I I want to know what that is, and she's always readily available. But you're saying we need the actual paper copy of the bill itself.
What I'm telling you, the fraud risk is like, so if Dick Hengston was 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 in that one of the levels just below you in the finance. And 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 approving the warrant, and you relied on me. And and I put a bill in for myself, I put a bill in that really, I put on a warrant, but there was not a bill. Then, I mean. Dick, I could I could perpetrate fraud because you're approving something that wasn't a real bill on. And so. I just think that that's that's where the danger lies. And and you know, and it's particularly in areas where credit cards are used. If there's any any type of credit cards, that's where that's where there's a more than. So if I was gonna do something other than look at all of them, I would look at every bill that's related to a credit card.
My question my question to the administrator is what do we have that's run on credit cards?
The the finance director can probably give a more detailed answer, but it it's very limited. You know, as a matter of fact, it was, you know, to the point where when the transactions are occurring, at least. You know, and out of my office, you know, they're communicated electronically, almost real time when they happen. So very limited distribution and very limited use, but I'll ask the finance director to provide the detail.
And and the other thing is, Dick, you you probably recall my past life here, my retired life. You know, I was a back examiner and an auditor. And, you know, so what we did is we try and minimize risk. And again, there there are certain tracking capabilities in relation to specific vendors that we can track by aggregate dollar amounts. So if someone was doing small dollar amounts, you know, they were well below a threshold. You know, the aggregate amount within every 30-day period or three-month period, you know, would then have to be tracked, and it's just a programming.
Yeah, so I mean, you do have you, I mean, the structure is 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 set up. But of the internal control process is set up well, because you do have like. You know, like the treasurer's office is in charge of the checks and the accountants' offices in charge of it. So there is a good segregation of duties. It is this, there's just been a, actually, it was a couple for us in 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 recent, in the last year or so, two years. That have. Where where someone that was in a high level of the highest levels of internal controls was was the one that was doing it. So that's where the the risk was was with somebody. And 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 I and I'm putting this in everywhere, and I think that, you know, I I don't mean that. I'm not trying to point accusations at anyone, because I think that you have a very, very strong finance team and led by Liz. And, you know, I think you have you're very strong there. So I'm just trying to identify risk areas when when somebody else is there. You know, but it's for the next person or or just to set up controls for you guys.
Again, I I was not, I mean, I'm aware that there's limited use of credit cards. It's why I asked the question to the administrator. Because those discussions in years past in relation to whether or not we want to even have them floating around. On an as-need basis and for certain certain circumstances, and it's been pretty well controlled. The rest of it would be, again, just, you know, invoices being submitted below certain thresholds. And again, if we don't look at the aggregate amounts and who's getting what. But again, I understand where you're coming from. I just don't know about the effort that needs to be put into mitigating the risk. And I also understand the need for your comments, you know, across the board. But again, you know, how applicable is it? It could be applicable to us later on if we're not vigilant about it, so.
Right, that's and that's, you know, I feel like I'd be remiss if I if if something happened and which would, you know, I don't expect. And 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 I I think that I would feel remiss if something happened and I hadn't said, no, how did that happen? And that 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 is the way it happened in in one of the places, and actually, both of the places. That that the the only person that could have caught it was the board.
So, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'll spend a little time with the town administrator and the finance director, just to kick around. What we have, what our exposure is and see if we need to implement some sort of internal controls, tighten them up a little bit.
Does anybody have any other questions? Mr. Waller, any questions? All set. Mrs. Gonzalez? All set. Mr. Studo?
All set.
Okay, now I had I had the questions along a similar line, because in your final notation, you did not find any deficiencies or issues. So I understand that. I'm actually familiar with that case. And it was the the treasurer who had his own companies, he was diverting funds to his own dummy company, so.
Yeah, and there was another one where where somebody in another position was 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 doing something through through credit cards.
Yeah, it's amazing that the scams and the schemes that are accessible. Even in this day and age with all the oversight. So I I've worked on a couple for the community that I work for, so it's pretty amazing. We had a significant theft of over half a million dollars years ago on real estate tax refund checks. So it's that people are creative in the ways that they abscond with the.
Yeah.
Funds, and it is our responsibility to preserve the public fisc, of course, so. That's a it was a great point noted, and I'm happy to see, though, that you you did not find any deficiencies. And this is basically storing up our oversight.
You you do have a good setup. I mean, the, you know, just because the nature of the the assessors doing the billing, the collectors doing the collecting, accountant doing the. The recording and and the reconciling done every month. I mean, I mean, you have a strong setup just by the very nature of your offices and and so and and the people in it. So I think that, you know, you have a good finance team.
Okay, that's great. All right, so we'll probably all like to take a a crack at, you know, kind of a little bit more review with the TA. So we welcome that, Mr. I'd welcome that, Mr. O'Leary. I don't think my colleagues would have an issue with it. And I could plan to discuss a few things with him myself, too. And any of my colleagues, I mean, we have a couple of finance people. On the board, too, that they might be able to help with that, too. Might be able to give some of their input on it, too. Do we have any other, anything else, Mr. Hengston and Mr. Gilberto? Do you have any other questions while Mr. Hengston's with us? No, and seeing none, I think we appreciate the effort that you put in. Thank you for that. Thank you, Liz, for that as well. And and again, to my colleagues, Mr. Hengston has offered, he's made himself available. If there's something more in that report, which is a pretty lengthy and in-depth report to something more that you'd like to. He's he's offered for you to just reach out directly to him on that. Mr. Gilberto. Go ahead.
I recognize that I said I did not have any questions, but when I just checked the chat, I saw that there is a question in there from, I believe, a resident. I'm just gonna read it. Just says it's a very general question, but do we know how deep the auditor questions can be on expense that seem out of the ordinary?
I'm sorry, can you say that again, the last part?
Do we know how deep the auditor questions can be on expense that seems out of the ordinary?
Well, we do a sample. It's not a fraud audit, so we're not testing everything. We do a sample and we and and if anything looks unusual in our sample, we'll we'll dig into it. And if and we scan the ledger for unusual entries, too. So we do our best with 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 what they're doing, and we follow the standards. So, I mean. The when you the probability wise, when you went in order to gain, we have. Levels of assurance that we have to have, and it's certain, and we have to do fill out forms that tell us what well is we. Determine how many items there are in the population. And we have to have like a 97% assurance rate. And and the number is 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 fairly low that you have to test, you know, to 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 get that level of assurance. It's kind of like a polling where where you have millions of people and they 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 take a poll of them, you know, 1,000 people. And so we're in the same boat. We're doing sampling. But anything that looks unusual to us that we see, we we follow to the end.
Okay.
The Madam Chair, the person who asked the question says thanks.
And he also asked another question, that this management report that the board receives annually? That our auditor does come to speak with us about annually? That is available. It's a public document. It's a public record. And, you know, it's in our it's in our packet for purposes of us reviewing it to question Mr. Hengston. So I it's it's. So I, it's, it's definitely a document that you can see or have, or have a copy of, or I don't think you post them online, but they're certainly available if someone wants to look at it.
So they are posted online, I believe through the annual report, if I remember correctly. So they do get posted.
Okay.
And that, but it's a public document and we'll provide it if anyone's asked. And the person who asked the question, I've given them my email address.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Okay, Mr. O'Leary.
Just looking forward to next year. If, if at some point in time we start getting reimbursements on COVID funds, how is that going to expand your scope and as far as a crossover between regular appropriations and COVID reimbursements and things of that nature?
Well, the, the audit guidelines have not come out yet for it, but there's, I'm sure that it's gonna, we, we already do Single Audit Act and, and it's, it's, there's like, once you have over $750,000 in federal grants, then, then you're required to have additional testing. And that's why that second report I mentioned about the internal controls and compliance over the grant programs. That's why we have to do the testing to give us the ability to issue that report. So we'll, we'll be, and, and we, depending on how large they are, it, it, it tells us how many of those we have to test. We have to test at least 25% of the total expenditures that you have for federal grants. So last year, I think we tested two grants and, and the year before there was one grant. So we tried, they, they want us to try to rotate. I'm, I'm sure that.
Yes, friend.
I'm sure that there'll be, the, the, the COVID grants will be in our scope next year because we've, we've tested a lot of the other bigger ones in the prior two years. So if this, if these are fairly large in scope, do, do you know how much you, you, you think you're going to be getting?
We hope it's a lot. I wouldn't say one point two we're looking for.
Yeah.
Plus some money.
Chances are that will be the, you know, they, they have things called clusters. And if, and, and sometimes the, the past, the stimulus packages in the past, they've said they've called them clusters when there was multiple grants that were for the same types of things. And, and, and I'm thinking that these are going to be clusters because there's several grants right now. There's, there's an education grant and there's a couple others that are out there. So I, I think that what we'll end up doing is that, that will be the grant we test are that cluster of grants is what the ones we will test. So I'm sure that somehow it will, when it's that much money, it will be in our purview of our audit.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hankston. Liz, we know you're joining us. Thank you as well for all the effort.
Thank you.
And to your.
Stay healthy, everybody.
Yeah, you too. Take it easy.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next order of business is the vote to sell town on land map 78 parcels 70, 17 to 23 Virgish Side Drive, which is a continuation of the public meeting that we had last time on August 17th. Do you want us to read the publication notice again, Mr. Gilberto, or is that not necessary?
Madam Chair, I don't think that that's necessary. I, I have followed up with town council as we discussed at the last meeting and they did affirm the statements that I made previously, which is that, you know, in terms of the, you know, pending application, the, the GLAM calculation is fixed as of the date of the application. So, you know, I think that's what I related the last meeting and they did confirm that further provided, you know, that provided me that, you know, where it could become relevant might be for a future application with regard to what the other ratios are. And so, you know, having thought about the discussion that we had last week and having talked with town council, I do think that there's an avenue here to maybe address the concern as I understand it from the abutting resident. And that avenue could be either a lesser acquisition or perhaps just an easement for purposes of the, what we know as an existing driveway. I've not had the opportunity to discuss this with the residents and I don't believe I see them on the meeting here this evening. So my, my suspect, my, my recommendation is actually that we, that we actually continue the hearing to a further, a further agenda. But I, I think in reality, the transaction we may be looking at may be a, a separate transaction that's much smaller in nature, but I would like to discuss that. And I'm, again, I'm, I'm just bringing this up based upon what I understand about the request. But I don't think that we should be proceeding with a vote this evening on, on the sale because I think there's some more things to work out in terms of the desires of the abutters.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gilberto, especially given, given the confirmation from, from town council with respect to divesting of that parcel. I think that's what we asked you to look at. So. Okay. So does anyone have any comment or, okay, Mr. O'Leary?
Just, this is already gone before the, the planning commission, correct?
It has.
It has. So it's already been good there, blessing and approval. Just needs to sign.
Their approval was for an A and R to split the parcel in half. I don't believe that they weighed in one way or the other on the issue of whether or not the property should be sold.
Okay. But, but they allowed it to be split.
Correct.
And to me, if, if our concern is, and I forget how big this is, what, 3,000 square feet, 4,000 square feet? Small, very small. First of all, in relation to the current application that we have in the GLAM, no impact, you know, as far as any future 40B application, if we have to reply, rely on the GLAM to, to avoid 40B, we're not thinking about this properly or correctly in my estimation. And we should still be actively seeking to put town owned land, some of it back on the tax rolls, particularly instances like this, small parcels directly above people who need them. And, and I don't, I don't think we should be overly concerned about the GLAM. You know, I think that's the wrong way to think about it and the wrong way to be blocking 40Bs. You know, we should be embracing affordable housing. We should be, we have a plan in place that's already been approved and approved by the state. And we should stick to that plan. And we shouldn't just be not selling parcels because we're concerned about not having enough open space, you know, or under town control, which gives us a safe harbor instead of reaching the mandatory 10% threshold. So to me, I don't think we should, in this particular specific case, these people need the, need the land. We retain the other half of it. We still have access to the river there and down the street, which was one of the suggestions from the Conservation Commission, maybe even the Planning Commission at the time last year, when they, when they applied. So I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't move forward as quickly as possible on it. And again, as far as, you know, granting them an easement as opposed to, you know, selling it to them, that doesn't do us any good as far as putting any land back on the tax rolls.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, I believe that Mr. Gilberto recommended that we table this to a later meeting. So is that the consensus of my colleagues? Mr. O'Leary, you're not in favor of table?
Yeah, the hell, how long, how long are you gonna kick it out? You talking the next meeting or you talking six months from now or?
I, I, no, I, my suggestion would be to the board to continue it to, not the next meeting, but the meeting after Monday, September 28th.
Okay. And, okay, so we, do we need a vote on that or do you want me to just call the members?
A vote to continue the, the hearing to Monday, September 28th at 7:30 PM would be good.
Okay. So Mr. Studo, do I have a motion?
Motion on that.
What he said.
Madam Chair, a motion to continue the hearing to September, what was the date again? September?
2028.
28.
At 7:30 PM.
All right. Vote, vote, a motion by Mr. Studo. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
I'm fine with the 28th.
This is Mr. Wallner.
I'm good with that. Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez? The man you pally is aye. Okay. Thank you. Next order of business is the review and discussion of the October town meeting warrant articles, time, date, locations, vote recommendations. And we have Mr. Murphy joining us. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Murphy. So Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I think, and my hope is that this will be the most efficient of our conversations about town meeting scheduling yet, with us all having the benefit of seeing the venue, the, the multiple venues that are available. And so, you know, we, we met last Wednesday. And again, as I indicated that the last meeting, we did not have the opportunity to discuss the August special town meeting until last week. This meeting included myself, the town clerk, the moderator, and the fire chief, police chief and health director. I think the consensus was that while there were some challenges on the field, that, that, that overall we achieved the purpose in conducting the meeting. And that, you know, that to the extent feasible, having the meeting outside was preferable to, to having it inside. And so kind of, I guess, a long story short is that we then followed up with town council regarding the steps that we could take, particularly in light of the available dates for having a meeting. I think everybody's aware, there's a, a federal and state election that's happening in November. That election includes early voting. And what that effectively means is that in terms of having an outdoor meeting on a Saturday, which is what we are recommending, the dates that are available to us in October are October 3rd and October 10th. October 10th being the Columbus Day holiday weekend, which may or may not play into the board's determination, scheduling purposes. The weekends thereafter are either occupied with early voting or with preparation for Election Day in November as well. And so the, that will preclude the town clerk's office from being able to conduct the town meeting on those Saturdays. We talked with the health director because if, you know, for some reason we decided to go with the October 3rd date and the weather didn't cooperate, you know, we'd be looking at a postponement that would be into the first Saturday in November. And obviously that's, you know, becomes more of a concern. The health director indicated, but did not make any commitment, you know, that he personally would like, you know, to look at some data from other town meetings as well as what I believe we all would classify as the success of our own indoor town meeting on June 29th, to consider whether that is a viable option for us to, to, to have. And I know that he is going to be discussing that, I believe, along with the moderator at a board of health meeting on Thursday, September 10th. So in summary, what we are recommending this evening is that the select board vote to sign the warrants for a Monday evening, October 5th date at 189 Park Street. And we only picked that date because that's the date that was set after a hearing that's required under the town's charter in January. Some of you can see I have, I've asked attorney Klein to join us here from KP Law and he has joined us. We have discussed the feasibility and ability to change the date from October 5th to October 3rd, which the opinion of town council, and I don't want to, you know, speak for him, but the moderator, after consulting with the select board and the board of health, as well as public safety and public health officials, has the ability to do so. So we would be both asking the board to sign the warrant this evening for the date that was set in the hearing. And then in the next vote, asking that it recommend to the, to the town moderator that the town meeting be held on Saturday, October 3rd at 11 o'clock AM. And the intention would be to hold it at Arthur Kenny Turf Field as we did the August meeting. That date's not able to be pulled off for some reason, mostly because of weather. We have the ability to delay to another date. We'll also be having a conversation about the feasibility of having the meeting indoors with the board of health that they think that, you know, they've, at least that the health director has expressed a willingness to consider that. Again, that's not the position of board of health, nor is it the recommendation, but it is, I think, an important piece of the conversation that we'll be having next Thursday with the, the board of health.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments? Good? Members good? All right. Okay, Mr. Studo. Studo, go ahead.
Are we, are we gonna have a, just a discussion about it or should I make a comment now about the, some of the, what's already been maybe proposed to work as a first thing?
You mean a warrant?
I mean, the day, the day, about the venue.
Oh, the venue. Okay. Yeah. No, this is the time for us to discuss it.
All right. Just a quick note on, you know, one thing to consider, and I brought it up for everybody, just so everybody knows, the average temperature high on October 3rd in North Reading, Mass. is 55 degrees. So just something to say that if we get a perfect day based on the averages, you're looking at, if you do it in 9:00 AM, you're looking at a day in the high 40s to start. So just, just something to note that. So my question is, should we be working on making the warrant slim down enough where the first choice is inside? Because I, I think that we're just, you know, again, all we have is that. I mean, it could be an 80 degree day, right? We've had stranger weather come, but I just feel that if you just look at how weather has typically been around that time, we're really, you know, we're, we're, we're hoping for a pretty good October day. So I, I just, you know, just to make that comment that I, I think that maybe the conversation with the board of health that how can we get it inside happen sooner rather than later? Because I just, I, I, I could see, I could see this just not working, you know, or we could, we may run, I mean, we may just get a, a a, a pretty bad turnout. Not that, you know, it all depends what we're discussing. So just one thing that when you look at the average, it's just, unless we're doing it, so if we did this at 1:00 in the afternoon on that day, we can hope for a 60 degree day on average. But if we did it in the morning, like the last meeting, then, you know, I mean, I, I don't mind the cold, but it's just at that point, if we have a little rain, wind or anything, it's going to be pretty uncomfortable from the start. And we know that even a quick meeting that we expected to be 90 minutes for the turkey farm discussion, we were there for three and a half hours. So this, that's my take.
Okay. So preferring it to be indoors.
Correct.
Opposition preferring it to be indoors. Yeah. Okay. So and where, I, I think, does anyone else have any perspective on that, one way or the other? I mean, we did have a successful indoor meeting the last time. We also took the extra steps of doing the virtual, the board took the extra steps for both actually to do the virtual meeting in advance, which I think helped clarify and streamline. And then we did pare down, we did pare down the, the the town meeting that we had indoors because of COVID-19. And it's not looking like this is going to be letting up anytime soon. So I think that would be a good suggestion. I think we have to go through these individually too because as the members know from the packet, these, what's presented in the warrant was, we are going to be going through a review, Mr. Studo. So I think we could maybe decide what, what further can be whittled, whittled out if anything. Because it looks like a group of, the town administrator worked with a group on what, what they wanted on here. So it's a pretty lengthy, it's a pretty, pretty lengthy warrant. There, there's a lot of articles on the warrant. Mr. O'Leary too. Mr. Studo, did you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Mr., Mrs. Gonzalez, do you have anything you want to?
No, I, I mean. I think that Mr. Studo brings up some really good points. I can't help but agree with him. And we did do a very successful indoor town meeting, but we did really whittle it down. So it depends on how much we can whittle this down, you know, because we don't want to be indoors for a lengthy amount of time. That's the difference between what we did before.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary?
What were we set up for in the gymnasium? How many people? Safely distanced and all that?
I think around 150 total.
I thought it was more than, I thought it was.
It was because we had the satellite room with, with the setup next door that was being manned. But we didn't have to use it.
I mean, we had, we had what, 214 people or 218 people at the outdoor town meeting on the, on the turkey farm deal, which generated a significant amount of interest. Yet I don't know if there's, there may be a couple of articles here on the October town meeting proposed warrant that would generate some interest, obviously. a couple of articles here on the October town meeting proposed warrant that would generate some interest, obviously, like selling land for affordable housing, and maybe the Main Street thing. The rest of it is sort of boring, you know, but time-consuming, boring. But, you know, I think, I think we need to, and so, I guess, like, I thought the number was higher than 150 in the gym, but.
I'd ask, on the call through you, Madam Chair, Chief Stats, do you have additional detail on the occupancy we had? I know you were, I remember you telling me what the number was.
I believe it was 175. I think we had 115 in gym. I think we had overflow seating set up, although we didn't have to use it.
Okay, so that might be pushing it. You know, that's if you still use the gym, or you use the, and then use the overflow. But, and then again, we also have the honor of trying, but again, we'd have to confer with the the school department as to what their concerns might be in relation to, I mean, the school is going to be open part-time anyway. It's going to be open four days a week, but, you know, what would work, what wouldn't work, you know, can we, can it be done inside? So, I agree, you know, as the later we get into the the year, the more difficult it's going to be to to hold it out of the football field, so.
Mr. Wallner, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I'm pretty comfortable with the October 3rd. I think the 11 o'clock start time is good. I think, you know, you know, if it all turns into bad weather, the next stop is going to be inside. I think that's pretty clear at this point, so let's give it our best shot. We've gotten lucky two out of two times. I think we're just going to hold our fingers and hope it works out. So, I think 11 o'clock starting the third makes sense, and we have to punt, we're going inside. I don't see any, I don't see any other path but that.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we do this? I think we could go through these warrant articles and see what we might be able to pare down, at least go through the exercise of paring it down. And actually, we do have Mr. Murphy here. Mr. Murphy, I don't know if you have any comment to add to the discussion.
If I may, Madam Chair, I mean, I think the, when we had our meeting last week, I think the average temperature, depending where you get it from, right, I think the average temperature was 60 degrees, so I think October 3rd on a Saturday at 11:00 AM, if it's a sunny day, yeah, it might be cool, but I think that works and provides the size of the venue that we need. And to Mr. Wallner's point, we've got, gotten lucky two out of two times, so I'm willing to roll the dice on three out of three.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I know that we did not ask the superintendent of schools to come on this call, but he did participate in our discussion last Thursday. And the feedback that, you know, that he provided was that if we were looking to have an indoor town meeting, that he would, that the meeting be held on either a Friday evening or a Saturday, as opposed to during the work week, where there would be a short turnaround for sanitizing, et cetera. So, and I think that that's certainly reasonable feedback, you know, from him in terms of the facility. So, you know, again, that kind of pointed us to the Saturday in either scenario.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, we're, do, we have a vote on that at this point, or are we, or did you combine the votes into all one? Because we still have to review the articles that were in the packet.
I structured the order this way purposely because I knew that the location was sort of affected by what was on the warrant. So, the last steps in this process, in my opinion, was going to be voting to sign the warrant, and then voting a recommendation to the moderator with regard to the date. So, I think if it's, I think we are at a point where just going through the articles is probably the best next step. I prepared a series of motions for recommendations as well. We could take those up separately, if the board would like, rather than delay the discussion. But if you'd like, I'll go through the motions and just offer the articles and offer my feedback.
So, I'm just trying to get to that page, so my colleagues can get to the page in the packet with the, I know the warrant is in here.
It's 125.
Thank you. 125?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, anyway.
Should we, should we use the revised one you sent out that's five pages?
I sent a revised version earlier, and yes, if you go to that attachment in the email I sent out, that's the most updated version of the warrant. Thank you, Mr. Studo.
Is your email at 7:00?
Correct, yes. And the document is North Reading-2020 Fall ATM Revised Draft Warrant.
Okay.
MPG DK.
Okay. So, we're looking at that, and the Article 1 is here, and act on reports of town officers and committees, and that's a pretty standard article for each annual town, each town meeting, right? That isn't one that can kind of, that's just one we need in the warrant, right?
Correct.
The next one is?
I should say, it's one we customarily have, and we actually, if I recall correctly.
Okay, all right. So, you have a motion to recommend, motion that we recommend that one, right?
I did. I wrote motions for all of these articles, but in terms of this article, I believe it's an annual requirement that we satisfied at the June town meeting. So, you know, if we didn't want to entertain anything that's not strictly the business of the warrant, you could not have it on the warrant. I mean, that is an option. And that, you're going to find that that's true for many of these warrant articles. Unfortunately, the ones that are probably most time-sensitive are probably the more controversial items.
Okay, well, we look forward to getting to those. So, what's the, what's the board's pleasure on Article 1? Do we want to, do you want to take a motion and deliberate, Mr. Studo? Is there a motion there?
Yes, there is. Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article 1, hear and act on reports of town officers and committees.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Studo. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Mr. Wallner.
Yeah, just, I would just ask that the reports be as brief and to the point as possible. That, you know, if we're going to go forward, let's make everybody try to be as brief and get to the point as possible, and not add anything extra. So, that'd just be a general, general request all the way around the entire meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, a motion and a second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Motion to recommend, seeing Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chair is aye, so we're recommending Article 1. Next one is prior years bills, which again is pretty standard fare. Mr. Gilberto, are you anticipating that this is necessary for the October meeting?
I have not heard that there are any, if the finance director has information to the contrary, certainly, please weigh in, Liz.
Okay. So, hearing none, do we have a motion on this one?
Yep.
Mr. Gilberto, doesn't need to be on the?
This is one, if we are going to have a meeting, I would suggest leaving it, only because occasionally, we receive bills that have a late fee associated with them, or something of that effect.
So, we vote to recommend a town meeting?
Yes, please. That's my recommendation.
All right, so, Mr. Studo, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article 2, prior year bills.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez. And Chair is aye, so we'll recommend a town meeting if anything comes up. Article 3, transfer funds to capital improvement stabilization fund. And is there a dollar figure recommended? Is this remaining to be recommended, Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, we do have a fall transfer. It's not required that we do it in the fall, but if we are having a meeting and have this article, we would make a transfer, and I'm just going to ask the finance director to confirm the dollar amount.
I believe it's $200,000. I would have to double-check with the capital plan, but I believe it's $200,000.
And that's generally from free cash.
Correct.
Okay, so it's, the motion is to recommend that, right? Okay, so, Mr. Studo, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 3, appropriate money to the capital improvement stabilization fund, and the amount of roughly $200,000 from free cash.
Second.
Would it be roughly, or would it be specifically $200,000? It would be specifically, right?
I tried to keep it vague.
All right, so we have Mr., we have a motion to, by Mr. Studo, to transfer 200, to recommend transfer 200,000. We have a second by Mr. O'Leary, right, Mr. O'Leary?
Correct.
We have a little hand raised by Attorney Klein. Did you want to say anything, Attorney Klein?
Yeah, I just was saying, tonight, I mean, we obviously, you don't know the motions that are going to be made yet on town meeting floor, or even what necessarily the exact amounts are. I mean, I think tonight you're voting to place the articles on the warrant, because obviously, there'll be more specific information. The board doesn't need to decide tonight how much they want to transfer yet, because those numbers could change between now and.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein. All right, Mr. Mr. Gilberto, why don't you add a little more to the confusion here? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, we customarily ask the board to vote recommendations on articles that are normally part of our accounting, or our financial transactions that take place, sometimes regardless of the dollar amount. So, the board's had a custom of recommending articles like that when there isn't a dollar amount in question. So, for example, it could be that it's $200,000 in the plan, but that we look at the overall financial plan and increase that dollar amount. I was kind of thinking, if we get to an article and the board's feeling is, look, we really don't want that on the warrant, that we speak up and vote to remove it from the warrant, but otherwise, I think, while I understand Attorney Klein's question, the board's practice has been with these non-financial articles where we know there's going to be a transaction, or there's highly likely to be one, to just simply recommend it without a dollar amount.
Okay, but we are all here, we're reviewing. There was an internal team that put this on the warrant for us, so isn't it helpful to the board's edification whether or not they want to vote to recommend that we know an amount and a source? I mean, I think what the recommend.
You're breaking up, Madam Chair.
Because you're asking us to sign the warrant tonight, too. So, that's the other thing. Right? You want us to sign it, so you wanted this to be as complete as possible with regard to our recommendations on it, too, right, Mr. Gilberto?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so, so did you want us not to vote? So, now we're not voting on the amount, even though that was the amount that we were given? You just want us to vote to recommend a transfer?
Correct.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Mr. Studo, recommend 200,000, seconded by Mr. O'Leary. Does anyone want to discuss that further? Seeing none. All right, on the motion, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Did we lose Kate?
I think we lost Kate.
Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Wallner, Mr. Studo.
Aye.
I will say aye.
Kate joins us in the future.
Yeah, we can, can we get? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we all voted aye. We just need your vote, Kate. It's an aye. It's a yes. Trying to trouble this, I apologize.
We have dead air.
Yes.
Okay, she's asking me to take over. So, we're going to move on to Article 4, appropriate money to stabilization fund.
Madam Vice Chair, we do not have a dollar amount to recommend at this point in time. Depending upon the fiscal year, we have made a recommendation to transfer in, coming to the stabilization fund. But at the moment, I cannot tell you that that will be a recommendation, nor can I provide a dollar amount, and therefore, we have recommended that the board, if it wishes to have this on the warrant, which if we're going to have a town meeting, I would say that it should be on, that the board vote to recommend at town meeting. They are.
So, do we have a motion for that, Mr. Studo?
Madam Vice Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, appropriate money to the stabilization fund.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
I'm an aye. We'll have to abstain, the Chair.
I think she's there.
I heard you, I just couldn't see you. I heard you, recommend a town meeting, and I'm an aye. We're on to Article 6.
Did I miss Article 5? I apologize. I heard 4.
No, we're, we're at 5.
Okay, Article 5 is the same situation as is Article 6. We, I should say, Article 5 is the same as Article 4. We do not always make such a transfer at town meeting. Depending upon our financial picture and the strategy moving into the next fiscal year, we may wish to make a transfer. Where there's no dollar amount identified at this point, we would be asking the board to recommend it at town meeting.
Madam Chair, are you with us? Yes, do we have a motion, Mr. Studo?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article 5, appropriate money to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? I am seeing none, so, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez. And Manu Polly is aye. Okay. Next article is 6. Same thing for Article 6. Do we have a motion on Article 6?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, through you, we do customarily recommend a transfer at the October town meeting. However, the dollar amount won't be available until we close out the last month's health insurance cost, which normally occurs sometime in the middle of September, at which point we'll report the dollar amount to the board. So, we're recommending to recommend a town meeting.
And I apologize, Mr. Gilberto, I thought you said that for all three of these. That's why I moved to a vote, so.
Yeah, I corrected myself, because I realized 6 is slightly different than 5 and 4.
Okay, all right. So, do we have a motion, Mr. Studo?
Yep, Madam Chair, I move to Yep. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article VI, Appropriate Money to the Participating Funding Arrangement Fund.
So that town meeting?
Yes.
No. We're going to be making a
Sorry, recommend, yes, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, just on these articles that we know there's going to be a transfer made, we just don't know what the dollar amount is. To me, we should be informing the public, regardless, whatever the administration recommends to us as far as the source of funding, the dollar amount, I find it hard to believe that we're not going to endorse it and recommend it and advocate for it. So we should notify the public that we're going to be in favor of transferring some money from some source into these funds, and we should be recommending it, not waiting till town meeting. That, and again, historically, that's what we've done with a lot of these articles, where we don't have the exact dollar amount until the books are closed. We know that we're going to be transferring in, we know we're going to be following the administration's recommendation, and therefore, we're going to inform the public, we're going to recommend it. So in this, in this instance, I think we should be recommending it, but regardless of what the dollar amount's going to be for the source.
Okay. Mr. Studo, did you move to recommend or recommend a town meeting?
I think I said recommend a town meeting by accident, even though I was just saying recommend.
Well, I don't think that was by accident, but that's okay. So did you want to withdraw your motion? I think that's what was recommended by the administration for us
At town meeting, okay.
So recommend is a motion to recommend. Is that what you're doing?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article VI, Appropriate Money to the Participating Funding Arrangement Fund.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez? And Chair is aye. amend the operating budget, Article VII.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I just, to, to follow on Mr. O'Leary's comments, I just, to the extent you put dollar amounts in these articles, you put yourself in a, in a box. So if, if the amount is 200,000 today and 190 or 210, you, you're putting yourself in a box.
Okay.
So if you recommend the article, recommend the article, and try not to put yourself in that position.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Attorney Klein, yes.
My understanding, looking at the warrant, and that's, that's the point I was trying to make earlier, is the articles that you're approving, even though the town administrator is talking about likely on financial amounts, those amounts, and the administrator can correct me if I'm wrong, there are no amounts in the warrant. The warrant is written, just as the moderator suggested. There are no amounts in the warrant articles that you're reviewing right now. So, Michael, I don't know if you want to add some clarity, but
No, no, that's correct, we, we
It was your intent that the, the warrant be revised to have those amounts?
No, we, we did not intend to revise the warrant, nor have we customarily done so. And for the articles where the dollar amount is a very variable, we often will either say we're going to recommend that town meeting, or if we don't think we're going to do it, recommend passing over. But we've, Darren, you, you don't have in front of you, nor do you, Mr. Moderator, but the board has recommendations on each one with regard to what we believe the recommendation ought to be. In the case of Article VI, I totally butchered it in that I was reading from Article V, Madam Chair, which is what caused the confusion. So I apologize for that.
Okay, I think we corrected it with the vote, and Mr. O'Leary made the correction. But we're on to Article VII now, but there is nothing, no, no monetary amounts to Article VII. What's your recommendation on Article VII? I mean, it's, it's included here, and it's one of the standard articles that we keep at town meeting, just like the, the previous ones that we've just read. So do you have a recommendation for us on Article VII?
I do, to recommend it at town meeting, because I do not know the details of which transfers will be required.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Studo, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting. Article VII, amend FY 2021 operating budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez? And Chair is aye. All right, we're on to Article VIII, rescind authorization to borrow. It's another standard article on our warrants, right, Mr. Gilberto?
Correct.
Your recommendation on this?
To recommend a town meeting, because we do not have the specifics of any authorization which may need to be rescinded at this point in time, and often that develops as we get closer to the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Studo, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article VIII, rescind authorization to borrow.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez? Chair is aye. Article IX is amend the FY 2021 capital budget. Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, this is a bit unique this year in that the Capital Improvement Planning Committee recommended a limited capital improvement program at the June town meeting. We're putting this article on there and recommending that it be voted to recommend at town meeting in case there are any further projects that are recommended for appropriation that are capital in nature.
All right, Mr. Studo?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article IX, amend FY 2021 capital budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary, recommend a town meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Chair is aye. Article X, Appropriate Money for Special Counsel Legal Services. This is in regard to the lawsuit against PMA and Doran Whittier. Mr. Gilberto?
That's correct, Madam Chair. As of this time, there is not a request for funding. However, we have historically put this on the warrant while the case is proceeded, just in case there's been, there's any change to the town standing between now and the meeting. So we would therefore recommend the board vote to recommend at town meeting the article.
Mr. Studo?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article X, Appropriate Money for Special Counsel Legal Expenses.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez? Chair is aye. Article XI is Appropriate Money for Martin's Pond Water Treatment. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This warrant article is a follow-up to a presentation we heard from the committee in the beginning of August. I, my impression from the Select Board was that it was looking favorably upon this, and again, we know the reason it's been suggested to us is so that if approved in October, it would give the committee the ability to conduct the treatment early enough in the season to be more effective. We put it down as a recommend, and we believe the dollar amount to be $25,000 based on the presentation that we've heard from the committee. If the board wishes to wait until we have certified free cash, which is likely to be the funding source for this project in order to recommend it, you could hold off until town meeting, but I thought I heard a couple of meetings ago that the majority of the board were looking favorably on this appropriation.
Yes, I think they, they had the unanimous approval when we saw the presentation, so. And I think they, they did, they did quote 25, but we're not going to, we're going to save the amount till later, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so is your recommendation to recommend a town meeting?
I, I would normally say to recommend a town meeting only because of the issue of nailing down an existing funding source. I'm projecting a funding source will exist, but it does not exist as of yet. If the board wished to take a more stronger endorsement of this article because of its previous conversation, we could vote to recommend this article. It's the board's pleasure.
All right. Mr. O'Leary?
I believe we should be recommending it now, sending a strong and clear message to the community that we're in support of addressing the needs of the Martin's Pond. Again, it's a tremendous resource that needs to be addressed, and it's a small amount of money, and somehow or another, we'll find the, find the sources to, to support it. And if we can't, then we'll have to change our recommendation. But I think the strong message of recommending it now is important.
Okay, I think we would probably unanimously concur with you, though I don't want to speak for my colleagues. But Mrs. Gonzalez, are you in agreement with that?
I am.
And Mr. Wallner, are you in agreement with that?
Yes.
Mr. Studo, are you in agreement with that?
Correct.
All right, so do I have a motion, Mr. Studo?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article XI, Appropriate Money for Martin's Pond Water Treatment.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Manu Pali is aye. Now, Article 12, and so all, so far, all 11 are sticking in the article, sticking in the warrant, so Article 12 is fun. Town building repairs. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This has been a customary argument for the fall town meeting. Moved to the June town meeting a couple of years ago, and then moved back to fall because of the COVID situation earlier this year. I do not have a list of projects at this point in time, although we may have some items for consideration. So I'm therefore suggesting that the board vote to recommend at town meeting.
Mr. Studo?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article 12, fun town building repairs.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question, is this the normal $50,000 that we're talking about?
Customarily is, yes.
Okay, and do you anticipate, because of resources, that we're not going to have the $50,000 to? We, we certainly have $50,000 worth of it's, it's repairs to
It's more, it's more apprehension about capacity to take on additional projects, because we do have some projects that are pending still, previously approved, I want to make sure we get done. That, that's more the concern.
Okay, again, to, to me, this is, you know, money that we normally appropriate on a regular basis, and it's factored into the budget. And so normally, we'd recommend this, so. And again, I know I seconded the motion, it's more for purposes of discussion. But even if, even if we have the money appropriated and it doesn't take place, so the repairs don't take place until next June, which is still in this fiscal year, I'll begin that, that's fine, you know, but semantics, that's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion to recommend a town meeting by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. We have motion on the floor. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And you probably is aye. Article 13. Downhill funds for historical buildings, appropriate funds. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the first of a few that are not standard articles, as the board members probably know. You may recall that this was an article that was on the warrant for the June town meeting in a draft form in April or May of this year. Because it fell outside of the sort of core purpose of the June town meeting, which was to address the budget and other time-sensitive items, this article was taken off the warrant for the June town meeting. It's back on here for the October town meeting. And the intention of the folks at the Historical Society, the Northern Intequarian, Historical and Intequarian Society, which is a nonprofit group that has a, an agreement to exist and to operate historic buildings on the grounds of the Putnam House in the center of town. They had come to Mrs. Gonzalez and Mr. O'Leary, I think in January of this year, asking if the town would be able to contribute some funds to this and set up an account to which the residents could make donations as well. And there is an ability to do that, but it would require a special act of the state legislature in order for a single account to exist in that form. Some of the board members may know, and for those who do not know, in terms of establishing a gift fund into which donations could be made, the board has the authority under state law without requiring town meeting approval to do that, if it so desired. In terms of appropriating town money, that would need to go through town money to town meeting, and absent a special act of the legislature, we need to be separate from the account into which funds are being donated, which is what we're recommending here, more so in the interest of expediency than anything else. So it would be sort of, I guess, a match, if you will, and we would ask the board to establish a gift account pursuant to state law at a future meeting, if that was its desire. I do feel, I, I should note, there is a 31-year-old agreement between the town and the Historical and Intequarian Society for the land on which these historical buildings are located. The town provides insurance coverage and at times has provided work assistance with any issues that are on the property. I think we had a, a well, an old well that collapsed that needed to be shored up and we were asked to assist, and we did. But I, I do want to make the board aware that when the agreement between the town and the Historical and Intequarian Society was signed 31 or so years ago, it included a provision that, that the, the property would be maintained and repaired at the sole expense of the Historical and Intequarian Society. So you know, this, this language would not necessarily align with that, but I think that those are terms that if we wanted to consider amending them, we could. I mentioned the agreement is 31 years old. It happened to automatically renew a few months before my first day working for the town in 2014, so I have not been involved in its development or in its renewal. But I would think that based on what was requested of us by the Historical and Intequarian Society, that they would be agreeable to some sort of amendment. So I know that's sort of a, a bit of a lengthy explanation, though it's something that I think we hope would be a little more straightforward, but I just want to provide the board all the information.
Okay, so I believe when, when this topic came up and was placed, was placed for inclusion, it was a, it was a rather nominal sum of funds that was being requested.
Correct.
But I don't think any of that information was available.
Hope you're feeding up there, Kate.
I think, I think again, this was another item that oh dear, sorry. Okay, I'm sorry about that.
We got to be thorough now.
It's on computers, I apologize. All right, so it, it, what's the board's pleasure with regards to this? Is this one you want to keep on the warrant article? I, I had said that we, we were told it was a nominal amount being requested, but it seems to be, based on your explanation, this is a, a much more complicated matter than simply just designating a nominal amount. So what's the board's pleasure with regard to this? Any comment? Mrs. Gonzalez?
Um, Mr. Gilberto, do you think that we could get the wording beforehand? Would we have time for that? You thought that maybe some wording needed to be changed?
Yeah, I, I do believe so, yeah. I mean, you know, if the board wanted to see that the, the agreement was, you know, adjusted to reconcile the intent here and, you know, do so, and, you know, publicly, this article could be left on the warrant and just put for a recommendation at town meeting rather than a recommendation this evening. And Madam Chair, you are correct. I believe the spirit and the intention of the conversation was a, really a nominal amount, a seed money, to sort of kickstart what was, I think, going to be a request for donations from the town to assist in maintaining these buildings. You know, I, I recall some discussion about a, you know, a $5,000 to $10,000 amount. It wasn't a significant amount in the context of other transactions at this meeting.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary?
I, I think we should leave it on here and give ourselves a shot at getting something set up appropriately to do it. We could always pass it over if we, we can't come to an agreement, they can't meet on a timely basis to adjust the lease agreement and an agreement, or they can't meet on a timely basis to adjust the lease agreement and you know, but I think we should provide ourselves an opportunity to, to address the situation if we can. And again, I don't think it's going to be a lot of conversation either. Time wise.
Okay. Um, anyone else? Mr. Walner?
Good to leave it on. I agree with Steve O'Leary. I think it's a good discussion. I'd like to hear more about it before we get to the town meeting. You know, but we'll leave that up to that group to come forward and tell us more.
All right. Mr. Studo.
I'm good.
All right, do I have a motion then?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 13, establish fund account for historical buildings.
So is that move to recommend a town meeting?
No.
That's the question of the evening. Mr. Gilberto has his hand raised there.
We, we did, we did draft it as a recommend. However, we, when we got the confirmation opinion from Town Council, I think a recommended town meeting would be appropriate, just because there's a couple of things to button up. But I do agree that leaving it on the warrant would be certainly helpful towards resolving this issue.
Okay, that's great. Okay, so a motion to?
I would like to amend my motion.
Just make it. No, there was no second. Go for it.
No second was granted.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend the town meeting, Article 13, establish fund account for historical buildings.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Studo, motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez. And Manu Pelleas, aye. We are at Article 14, yes, Fund Hazard Mitigation Plan Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an article that has, it's an issue that's come up only in the past two weeks, which is that the Hazard Mitigation Plan that the town has is coming up upon an expiration date in the middle of next year. So the request is for funding to update that plan. So we're not writing a brand new plan, but we're updating a plan into which a substantial effort was put only five years ago. This is a, a plan that is very important for us to be eligible for grant funding, particularly from the federal or state government in the event of an emergency. And so updating it is very important, especially when we have a natural disaster that occurs. It's unclear whether it would relate directly to the COVID situation, only because of the timing with that emergency already being underway. But anything that would occur after the expiration of the plan, which is June 30th of next year, you know, could be, could be jeopardized. So we are therefore recommending that the board vote to recommend this. We are expecting it will be a, an appropriation of $25,000 to update the plan.
Okay. Um, any further discussion on that? Seeing none. Do I have a motion, Mr. Studo?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 14, Hazard Mitigation Update.
Second.
I have a motion to recommend by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez. Chair is aye. Article 15. It's Acceptance of Mass General Laws, Chapter 33, Section 59.
Madam Chair, thank you.
Something that Mr. Gilberto told us we, we have already customarily been doing. So this is an administrative formality that he recommended we, we handle.
That's absolutely correct, Madam Chair, and that the town has a, you know, it had a history of supporting its employees who are in military service when they are called to duty or for training. And so this would codify what has been a practice that predates my tenure of allowing them to serve with some limitations without loss of remuneration, including benefited time off. And so we're asking that the board vote accordingly. Vote to recommend this article and the town meeting approve it to align our practice with, you know, to align the approvals with what the practice has been.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Do we have a motion, Mr. Studo?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 15, adopt MGL, Chapter 33, Section 59, Employees in Military Service.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Manu Pelleas, aye. Article 16, Fund Route 28 Main Street Study and Redesign. So this is a, not one that we've spoken about. This is sponsored by Community Planning Commission and Department of Public Works, right, Mr. Gilberto?
That's correct, Madam Chair. I, I, and with your indulgence, I'd like to just offer a summary and an update.
Please, go ahead. Yes.
I know there was some discussion at the Community Planning Commission meeting two weeks ago, and to be clear, there were two articles that related. I'm sorry, I'm skipping ahead the article. So we have not discussed this one. I'm dropping ahead the carpenter drive and I apologize. Route 28 and Main Street Study and Redesign. This has been an item that the town engineer, myself, and the town planner have been discussing over the past year or so. You know, as we're moving forward on some projects, as we see the state making improvements on Main Street and communities to our south, as we, you know, look ahead to what we hope will be some determinations in the next year with regard to wastewater. This would be an effort for us to begin the process of preparing any potential changes to Main Street that we would want to take, see take place prior to it being repaved. And while the state does not necessarily have a timeline on which they are going to repave it, sometimes that timeline, you know, can, can catch up quickly if they're able to reprogram funding that's available. And there's also been some discussion in the community with regard to potential changes, whether it be complete streets, style changes, or other improvements, the addition of on-street parking. Those are things that would be outside the scope of a traditional state repaving project for the road and things for which if the town is interested in pursuing, we should consider planning for, because I do envision that if all goes according to what we hope will be the plan, we will be at a point where we'll have completed a major infrastructure reconstruction on the road in wastewater and the road will be in need of improvements and repaving and that that may be the opportunity for us to take advantage of some state and federal funding through the state's transportation improvement program to pay for it. But in order to kick, to kick things off, we had initially requested an appropriation of $200,000. After the last board meeting, I reached out to Representative Jones, who very quickly facilitated a meeting with representatives of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. And it would seem that a more appropriate step for us to take right now would be a more of a study rather than a study and design in the amount of $90,000 being appropriated to kickoff and kind of start to get the community to acquiesce around a vision for what the street itself would look like, not necessarily talking about the properties on the street, but we're talking about the layout itself. I know some of us are familiar that there was conversation not only about pedestrian improvements, but about road reruns or roundabouts. And that was only one component of a much larger review of the road that was done four or five years ago. This would allow us to continue the planning for all of the facets of that project. And again, the goal being to get us into a point where we're, we're working towards getting substantial state and federal funding for a project. But that would likely be a number of years down the road. I know the town planner is on here this evening along with representatives of the planning commission. So if I've, there's anything that they wish to add, I certainly would, through you, Madam Chair, welcome any, any comment or feedback that they might have. As well as the town.
I just, just a quick question. So you're saying it's a, to fund a study, a traffic study? And redesign of Route 28 Main Street is how it's worded, although in the body of the article, it just says design.
You're, you're right. It does say designed. This would be with an eye towards, it would be changing, potentially changing the layout.
Of Route 28?
Correct, yes.
Okay. In the entire Route 28 or changing the layout where?
So the focus of the, the initial study that was done was the stretch between Winter Street and Lowell Road and just slightly to the north and south of that. I would ask the planner just to speak to the detail of the scope she's proposed here through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Sure. So the study would include things like warrant analysis for the intersections, looking at how the traffic patterns would work, you know, considering volume for things like a road diet. There are a number of scenarios that we were looking at on this part of this. In terms of the segment, I am actually looking at whether the quote we received was for just a portion or whether it would have been for the whole corridor. And actually, if the town engineer is on and wants to weigh in on that, we might get that information a little faster.
Madam, I apologize to the town planner through you, Madam Chair. I know the town engineer is also on the call.
Okay.
Evening. That, the study was for the entire length of Route 28 from Andover all the way to Redding. They'd have to study, there's seven lighted intersections and all the unsignalized intersections and we'd have to study the entire route. But I think the, the main focus of updates would be that center section here where 62 crosses of a bigger adjustment through that area. But you'd have to study the entire length to kind of get an idea of what to do in the middle.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Studo.
Mr. Gilberto, is the, the grant you discussed, so, or the amount, is the $90,000 going to come from the state for the study or no? Or so my question, what was the, the discussion you had? What I believe you said Representative Jones, that he got like so? What was that discussion centered about? The, the drop the amount from 2 to 90 if they're not going to be coming up with the money anyways?
So, so the, the sense that I got from the conversation was you, we were going to do a study and then advance, begin to advance further at design. And the feedback from the state was, you know, once you've done a, a study and as much as I, you know, hate to see progress, you know, be, be sort of, you know, rely on, on study because I know that that can have a, can be, you know, frustrating because it doesn't sound like progress. They really want to hear from us what our vision is for the road so that they can then begin the work of designing with us a, a project. And that may involve additional design funds from the town down the road, or it may not. You know, that's something that they agreed that they would look at. But what was clear from the call is that, you know, they want us to sort of coalesce around what our vision is for the corridor. And, and this would be the, the vehicle for us to, to do that, at least in a conceptual level.
And then, Mr. Gilberto, would that mean that if then we got to the next stage, and again, if it's this, do we need a whole study and design again, or can we use that study for the design? So I'm just getting at that. I've looked at some things over time for different things, and it seems that there was a study without the follow-up. And then when we got to the follow-up, there was another study with the follow-up. And I'm just trying to see that it, is it going to be the same situation where here's the study, the state says, okay, let's go to the next step, but let's have another study while we're at it. So, and I know you can't predict the future, but it's just one of those things where if, if the state's not, if, if they're not coming up with the money, is it something where we can kind of just plan ahead without doing it to, you know, and again, just trying to get some guidance. I just don't want to spend the same money twice.
Sure. And I think it's a great question. And certainly the planner and the engineer can correct me if I, if I have any of this information incorrect. But we were fortunate enough to get some state assistance in the form of what I think was a $10,000 grant in 2015-ish to study that corridor between Winter and Lowell Road. The, the thinking is, from what I understand, that this study would then work off of that. You know, be much more substantial in terms of the cost, you know, an additional $90,000 worth. And that that would begin to point us towards, okay, what is it exactly is being designed here now? You know, we know what the, the community's desire is for this, what its tolerance is for, for, for different things on the road. It would then be now time to advance to the design. And that's kind of the guidance that I took from Mass DOT at this call. So talking about a very initial building block done four or five years ago, taking it to a, you know, to be refined and expanded to the entire length of the road to ultimately inform a design that would take place either by the state or by the town and the state in conjunction with each other, depending upon the type of project.
So the study is, it's like a visibility, a visibility of design? Of what could be designed? Am I saying that right? Is that what the study is? Besides, like in general, though, I mean, will it tell us what you can and cannot do?
Well, why, why don't we let the, actually, the proponents of this can explain what exactly they want us to?
Sorry.
No, that's fine. Your question is, is well put. And if, if we're grappling with it here, so this is why, why it's, why it's here for us to talk about. But they are here and they've joined us. So maybe they can explain the difference between what was studied previously and the studies paid for previously and when, and what resulted from those previously paid for studies and this study now. So they are here. So that's why they're here to maybe answer in the finer details about that. So go ahead. I can see you raising your hand, Mr. McKnight. Go ahead.
So the grant we received for the study we completed in 2015 was for $15,000 and it was very, very conceptual. And at that time, we had hired not a traffic engineer, but an urban design consultant to have a couple of community meetings and take a look at what might be possible to ask for some community feedback, to see what people might like to see. And to make some assumptions about the traffic, but in recognition that that was not the, the technical, it wasn't, it wasn't the degree of engineering. It was no engineering, basically. It was, it was really entirely conceptual with very informed by some basics of, of engineering and traffic study. This would really be the traffic study, you know, including counts and turning movements and looking at all, you know, what the warrants are for each of the seven intersections and you know, looking at the possibility of road diet. Road diet was something that was suggested and people were, you know, asked to give feedback and we looked at what it would look like, but we didn't have the information to really do an analysis to see whether it would actually work and whether it would have negative or positive impacts on the corridor. So those are the kinds of things that this much more detailed engineering study would, would do. And I don't know if John had anything more to add to that, but that's kind of my, how I see the difference between that very, very conceptual plan early on and this is much more detailed one that would enable us to actually go ahead then with, with a real design.
Okay.
Sure, I mean, you know.
You, are you saying that the first study was to just design? You, when you say conceptualize, design what it could look like and then, but this study is going to study actually traffic, traffic patterns bar at the lights at the, at the, at the corridor or, so this is more of a a specific engineering study versus what was paid for previously?
Well, yeah, I mean, we didn't pay. I mean, it was a, it was a grant funded project earlier and it was, I mean, there was some basic traffic information that was given in certain terms of very basic counts at that time. So it wasn't completely, you know, out of the air. It was, you know, but there were, it was, it was more based on, it was more of an urban design study with traffic incorporated, but it was not, it just, it just wasn't a full traffic study. It was not, we didn't have the funding for that and it was not of that type of scale at the time.
Mr. Clipfow, did you, were you, did you?
Sure, it's, I think it just brings us to that next level where it gets the, the actual traffic counts and kind of can show us what we can actually do instead of just what we all want to do. And whether what we want to do lines up with what you can actually do. And that, I mean, the last five years, there's been a, a bigger push towards traffic calming and having bike lanes and having a lot more, and especially this past year, having much more pedestrian friendly streets and roads. And this will kind of show us what, what direction we can go. And then it'll kind of flush out some community meetings to help us tell what we're looking to do in the future as well and what we'd like to do. A, a traffic study is only good the day that it's done. You can never, you know, in five years down the road, there may a bigger change that you can't control, but this gets us an up to date what we want to do now. And then in the future, if we go to, if say 10 years down the road, something changes or five years down the road, we decide to move further. Then we have a little bit less. Then we have a little bit less to do, but at least we have the ideas of the residents and the select board, what what their interests are in the future of the road.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Studo, any further questions?
Nope.
Did that answer your questions?
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
I'm just questioning timelines here and my fourth thought is the sewer. How does that all work? I mean, obviously, we don't want to do anything to the roads if we know sewer is going to come in. Like, what are we talking about with timelines here? Are there expiration?
Twelve, ten or twenty years.
What what did somebody just say?
That was Mr. Hayden. I think he said sewers to twenty.
No, no, the change in a road like that can be ten years or more. Getting the designs done or getting the study done so that we know what the town wants and needs to help the planners plan to bring in some shopping and and different things of that nature. But the state is going to take our ideas and what what we would like and hopefully incorporate that in their new designs. But it's the, I don't see the the road changing, getting complete in the next two or three. I've done, I'm pretty sure there's plenty of time to get the sewer in before any changes is completed on the roadway.
That's my concern.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Ms. Pierce, yes.
First of all, one of the things that that initial study did was to educate us about what the possibilities were for changing that roadway and what and how it worked and subsequent to that, at different meetings, we had members of the community come in and comment on what they liked and what they didn't like. So it actually began the education process also of the of the people in the community about what what's possible on that roadway and what it would look like. So this this new study would be the, it appears to me anyway, would be a continue, would in fact be a continuation of that, only incorporating the entire road so that we had an idea of what we wanted to do with the whole thing. And one would, one would hope that that we could get things moved along to the point where the installation of sewer and the reconfiguring of the roadway could be consecutive. It would be great to do the both at the same time. And so we would hope to to try to work towards that end.
Mrs. Gonzalez, does that answer your question?
I think so.
Any other questions? Mr. O'Leary, any questions, comments?
No, I I think it's a good idea and I think we should be laying the groundwork or continuing the laying the groundwork for, you know, what do we want to see out on Route twenty-eight? What is it, you know, possible? And then, you know, what can we afford to do? And again, this is all in conjunction with, it happens to be simultaneous with with the prospects of sewerage coming down Route twenty-eight. You don't want to be digging up the road twice if you don't have to. Nor does the state want you to dig it up the road twice if you don't have to, you know. So to me, this is it's timely, it's it's important information that we're going to need to make some informed decisions. And if we can get the state to partner with us, you know, all the better. So it's, you know, and to me, to me, this is something that we've been talking about for years, you know. You know, I grew up here and most people say, oh, look at Redding, look at Andover, you know, we're in between. You know, what can we do to enhance Route twenty-eight? What can we do looking forward as to, you know, when our population is aging and we need to, we need a downtown, you know, we we don't have a downtown. Do we want to create a downtown, you know, and how much of an investment are we going to make? So these, this study is just a continuation of a lot of work that's been put in by the Planning Commission, previous boards of selectmen and other people throughout the community over the last fifteen or twenty years thinking forward. And to me, I think it's a it's a worthwhile investment and information is going to be vital for us to make informed decisions.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Wallner, any comment questions?
Yeah, I recall back in May of two thousand fifteen, sitting with Danielle, Michael, the chamber, some other people who cared about this this road and we were sitting at Heavenly Donuts and we were trying to brainstorm, how could you make North Reading more commercially viable? And we kind of batted around the issue for about an hour. And finally, I just naively said to Michael, who was sitting next to me, you know, this is a state highway. Will the state high, will the state let you change this road? And he said, yes, they will, if you have a good reason. And that kind of, we stopped the meeting at that point because it just opened up a whole new set of possibilities. And since we've had that discussion, you know, CPC has been on a mission of doing a number of different studies. And I would say this study probably is one of the last studies we need to do before we have this master plan and we 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 decide what we're going to do going forward, as Mr. O'Leary said. So there's no doubt this highway is is very undesirable. If you've ever run down it or walked down it, which I have, watching cars go by you at fifty-five, sixty miles an hour is a bodily experience. You feel it as they go by. And there's no reason why we shouldn't have a downtown feel to our highway. This study will launch us to get to that point. And it's really a magic moment for us because, again, all these studies have have already been completed and this would be a numbers, a one of the last studies we need to kind of make an informed decision going forward. So I am strongly in support of us doing this. There's a long lead time in doing this kind of work, work, excuse me. And I I I'm a strong supporter of us bringing this forward to the town and getting it voted for so we can move forward.
Thanks, Mr. Wallner. I do have a couple of questions if, and it's it's getting back to Mrs. Gonzalez's point and a little bit of Mr. Wallner's point, too. If you know, Mr. Pierce, when was the last time that Route twenty-eight was redesigned in in North Reading? Do you have an idea or that?
Actually, I think the last time that, well, when it was all repaved was the last time, but I, but my understanding is that the plan that they worked was was from the late sixties and they finally got around to doing it. So I I think that probably if we if we get the study done and we we get a position to do a design, then if sewer comes along and we have a design ready, I have a feeling that the state would be far more willing to participate with it with us if we're if we're ahead of the game, if we have a design ready and we're and we have sewer ready to go and we can do the whole thing at once. But planning is always the most important part of it. I think that's why we need to move forward with this.
So for that prior redesign, that sounds like it was a while ago. It was decades ago, right? And did we pay, because obviously the state redesigned it. Did we pay back then for a traffic study for the state?
I know. No, that that design, I think, was done by the state to upgrade the road because the road was in, you know, somewhat disrepair. So that had, that had been on the books for a long time before they finally actually did it.
Okay, so but did they have a traffic study back then?
What we had was, we had a bunch of meetings in the in the Old Town Hall over there and the lot was now the library. And there were a lot of things that were discussed. For example, one of the things we wanted to do is to put feed-throughs underneath the highway so they could put all the electrics underground. But a lot of those things never got done because there were a lot of difficulties and a lot of problems in the in the repaving of that road. They, there's an area that they fixed and paved and it sank because it was on Pete and they had to dig it all out. So there was no money left to do any of the things that were suggested to them by by the businesses and the people back in that day. So basically, all they did is rebuild it, you know, to make it strong, not necessarily to meet any particular design or anything.
And I had another question. I know Mr. Gilberto said it was ninety thousand that is the sum, even though we're not voting sums this evening, but it was a ninety thousand dollar quote. Where does that, where did that figure come from?
I'm going to ask the town engineer just to speak to that because, yeah, the the quotes.
Sure, we sat down with consultants and had them work together a quote. We can provide you with that that quote that they had put together and they had put together a couple of different things. The ninety thousand dollars was just the study portion of it with a couple of public meetings and conversations with Mass DOT. And then they they started looking further down the road and and what a full redesign would be looking like for us if we got to that point. I will add that if we don't do anything, Mass DOT will come in at some point and they'll they'll repave the road. They are, you know, they're not good and they won't pay for their study. They will pay for everything leading up to it, but all they're going to do is just do from curb to curb that's out there. If you want to progress this to the next level where we start bringing curbs in and adding parking and having much more than that, my experience, I've done a lot of construction jobs with Mass DOT in the past, the communities that that are on the top of the list and that get what they're looking for, they're the one, they take the lead role and they really push Mass DOT along the way that they want Mass DOT to go. So I think that something like this will really, really help us get what we want. Even if it's not in the next five years, it'll really help us move along our ideas.
And so who was the consultant that you sat down with?
We sat down with TEC out of Andover. You know, we have a very well-written quote that breaks out exactly where that ninety thousand dollars comes from in each piece of that.
And is there, is it going to be an effort to get other quotes from different vendors on this to see what?
Yeah, we sure can sit down with other consulting engineers.
Just to see what, if that's the right sum. And then I just wanted to ask Mr. Gilberto, where are we proposing to take this money from?
I'm projecting that it would be an appropriation of free cash, uh, once certified.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the members? Mr. Wallner?
I'll just point out that Redding, that redesign, they did the repaving they did on twenty-eight, they did that in less than two years from the time they submitted to DOT. So they got it done really quick with a plan. So I'm not suggesting that we do ours in two years. What I'm, what I'm saying is what John said is that if you have a good plan upfront and the state is into traffic calming, they want to do that. They want to see you have business development, then you get to the top when you need them to do the work. So there is evidence right next door.
Thank you, Mr. Wallner. All right. And Mr. Gilberto, the recommendation on this, what was the recommendation?
Was to to recommend.
So it's what's the board's pleasure with regard to this?
Yeah, I I think it's yeah, they they answered my question and it makes sense that if you it will arm the town with what we need to, you know, seriously start making some moves without the typical excuses from the state level on certain things. So you know, this will, it seems like this will give us what we need. So as long as, yeah, I mean, if the quote is ninety, I mean, if we could do something better by getting a second one, so be it. But other than negotiating kind of a better price, I'd be in favor of it.
So the, I I should have asked you before this, you know, I mean, we were, we're, our task was to kind of look at these articles and see if any of this is can be pared down either. So is there any interest in removing this for another another meeting? With, doesn't, is it not really a sense of urgency with regard to this one? As there seem to be. Mr. Wallner, I see your hand.
Yeah, because it does take a long time to do this study. This is at least a year, if not longer. And I think there is a sense of urgency because we want this to tie out around the same time the FMPC comes up with their and other other studies that are in process right now. So to wait another six, seven months would kind of set things out of order.
Mr. O'Leary?
I concur. I think there is a sense of urgency. And again, because of the lead time, because of just gathering the information and getting ourselves set up appropriately to to control it ourselves. So I I think I think it should remain on here and just allow for presentation and let the let the people vote. And I would be in support of recommending it.
Okay, do we have a, any other comment? Do we have a motion, Mr. Studo?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article sixteen, Fund Route Twenty-eight Main Street Study and Redesign.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo.
Second.
And a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Chair is aye. Seventeen events of town on land for affordable housing development, map fifty-six parcel sixty-two, which is land located zero Chestnut Street. This is a, an article, again, sponsored by the Community Planning Commission to seek RFPs for the, for affordable housing, for housing for income fifty-five and over. I think in your notes it said sixty-two and over, but this reads fifty-five and over. And again, this isn't one that we've actually had before us, before this warrant article draft came to us. So, Mr. Gilberto, you'll have to fill us in on some of the salient details of this one.
Sure, and I I think that the the best way to describe it is that this has been a a property that has been discussed as a potential location for the construction of an affordable housing project for, I think, eight or nine years at this point in time. It was originally approved at town meeting to be conveyed to the Housing Authority for a project that was to be funded using federal housing production funds that that dried up and are to our knowledge, no longer available and for which the Housing Authority or Mystic Valley Elder Services, which was also a partner in this, we're looking to compete. Now, those resources are not available. And so, you know, we've been looking towards something that might be led by by the town. And I think that, you know, we've sort of looked at what we did with the Polte property in in going for, you know, and asking a request for proposals, although perhaps doing so with some greater parameters than we did with the that the property over where Polte is building in order to try to come up with a concept and and an actual proposal from a developer for a a lower moderate income housing development. We have a, we had an initial contract with the consultant to try to do some work that honestly was sidetracked by a number of different things over the past six months, six months, not the least of which is dealing with a public health emergency. And we've turned our attention back to this, to this project. And the thinking here is we have a revised scope with that consultant that she will work towards to give us some information to be reported to town meeting about the potential size of a development and potential parameters for a development that she believes the market will yield. And the thinking is that that would give the the board and the Planning Commission the ability to say to town meeting, we're seeking the authority to go out for proposals on this property. Here's the type of development that we're seeing, you know, might take place at it based upon what we know about the property and asking folks to approve so that when we go to the market, I'm seeking proposals that developers will be aware of our authority to to actually proceed with the project. You know, I I think that, you know, we're hoping to try to get this project moving along. I don't think it would be unfair to say that there are a lot of unanswered questions about exactly what the development would be. Our hope is that we're going to have information from the consultant that will better inform what we can expect for responses when we go out for bid at the October town meeting, but we will not have gone out to bid, knowing we have those proposals in hand. So, you know, in in light of that, and I think that we're all sensitive to the recent town meeting in which there was discussion about what exactly we were going to do with the parcel in question, namely, the the Turkey Farm property. And we could consider saying, look, you know, we we know this is, there's some urgency to this. We want to get this property developed. But perhaps it makes sense for us to let the process play itself out so we actually have proposals in hand moving forward. So that that's certainly. So that, that certainly is an option as well. I think the planner and I felt, you know, that with the long gap between the two town meetings that we were trying to see if we could move forward with this at October town meeting. We're hopeful that we'll have information that will answer the questions, but I think we certainly understand that it's possible that it may not be sufficient.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, could I just ask maybe if the town planner has anything to add through you?
Of course.
Really, I, I think, you know, we talked at length about what the right way would be to position this article, whether to get a basic minimum amount of information about the project for October or to, you know, continue working with our consultant over the course of, you know, the year and have R F Ps in hand and a much more complete project in June. And we, you know, decided that we could try to move, move ahead right, right now. You know, I don't think it would damage the project either way. It, it would be nice to be able to move ahead now, to be able to put out an R F P to say that we've already had the town meeting vote to authorize us to dispose of the property for this purpose. And by the time town meeting comes, um, we will, you know, we're anticipating, you know, not only our consultant's opinion, but a consulting engineer, you know, will be providing information having done soil testing and telling us what the possible yield would be for number of units. So we wouldn't be in a position where we would be telling town meeting, well, we think we want it to be of, of, you know, senior affordable housing, but we don't know how many, many units. We, we would have more specific information about that. And, you know, should it happen that the information we had wasn't really satisfactory or we really still had more questions, um, it, it, it wouldn't really harm things to, you know, to put it off to the next town meeting, but we, we thought it would be beneficial to this project, given all the discussions that have happened about affordable housing and wanting to take control of our, you know, destiny with affordable housing and pursue projects that the town has said we have, you know, decided that these are appropriate locations that we had a, we, we, we thought we, we ought to really try to, to, to get this going now.
So any further questions? Miss, Mrs. Gonzalez, did you have any hand raised?
I, I, I'm just in my thought process of trying to whittle this down. I mean, to hear that it wouldn't be a big deal to put it off and it might be something that would draw more of a crowd. That maybe we should put it off.
Any other thoughts? Mr. O'Leary?
Well, this particular neighborhood already has a forty B project directly abutting this parcel. They also encountered rezoning right on Havel Street at the corner of Mount Vernon Street for multifamily dwelling. And, you know, so I would expect that the neighborhood would be interested in, in the discussion and might generate a little more attendance than normally anticipated. I think there needs to be more, and again, it's difficult in this day and age, more public discussion as to specific locations for affordable housing as part of our plan here so that we can get the feedback from the neighborhoods that are going to be impacted or suggested impacts before we move forward. So again, I, I support affordable housing. I support the, the idea that we partner with people so that we know what we're getting and how many units we're going to have and how it's going to impact the neighborhoods and the streets. And I just think in light of meeting space and everything else, this might help jam up the, the gymnasium.
Right.
You know, and it's, uh, yeah. I, I could go either way, but I just think that this could generate a significant amount of attendance and discussion to prolong, even, even if it isn't heavily attended, it'll have a lot of discussion. You know, what is our plan? What are we talking about? You know, what are, what is the proposals? And it's going to be a lot of what ifs, you know, well, we could do this, we could do that. We could have, depending upon what the consultant says to us, these are the possibilities. And maybe we'd be proposing something like this. Or are we going to put out an R F P with some guidelines in it? To, uh, that it tailored, you know, what would be more acceptable to the neighborhood. So we, we have an awful lot of discussion take place in relation to not just this specific project, but other affordable housing projects throughout the community. So I, I think this may be one that I'd be in favor of maybe putting off till June and hopefully having more information available for public consumption and public discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Studo, any comment?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. O'Leary on all those points. The biggest thing is I, right now, whether this area would be the best for affordable housing, because of what's going on in other parts of town, I feel like it's, it's become like a loaded discussion and it's more that we need to have it. But I think this is going to, this alone could make the meeting a lot longer than anybody really wants to be. And then if we're inside, I mean, it could, yeah, I, I, I agree. I, I think this is just, this is something where you got to have confidence that you can have a full debate, giving everybody a chance who wants to speak to speak. And I, I don't know if that's something we're trying to invite right now based on the circumstances.
Mr. Wallner, any thoughts or comments?
Have anything to add? I, I'm kind of still evaluating it, but I don't disagree with what Vincenzo and Steve O'Leary said.
Okay. Well, now I'll just say, I think we should let the, let, put it on and we're already at Article seventeen anyway. We didn't pair anything down. We should just let the, let the people at the town meeting decide. I think we should recommend that it be considered and let the town meeting decide. I think, I think I've heard about this since I've been on the board. So it's not a new, a not new location. It's always been designated for that. There was efforts to make it into elderly housing. It's about time we step it up and do something for the elderly residents in this manner that's a low income. The, my only thought would be don't put fifty-five, put sixty-two, make it a legitimate elderly housing proposal. And I would reword it, but I would let the, let the people in the town say what they want there. I mean, especially because we own it, it's already a real tangible piece of property. It's an opportunity and it's an opportunity to, to provide for people that have been telling us over and over and over and over and over again, we need more affordable housing so that people can live and reside here. So I, I would say to leave it on. I know I'm in the minority, but if we left Article sixteen on to let the people decide, we're, we're going to spend ninety thousand dollars to study a street that's probably going to be dug up with sewage, hopefully sometime soon. And then this one, I think, makes far more sense because this is, this has been designated, I don't know for how many decades. Mr. Gilberto, you can tell me that one. How many years has this land been designated for this purpose?
I want to say it goes back to two thousand eleven or twelve that this discussion began with Mystic Valley Elder Services.
So I think we should take any steps we can to make this, this type of stuff happen because people in the town, they, they talk about this all the time. They even talked about this at the special town meeting.
Madam Chair.
Turkey Farm, so. But what's it, so that's, that's my, my piece on the matter. So, Mr. Studo, do you have a motion?
Madam Chair, Mr. Hayden would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see. I don't see you, Mr. Hayden, but please.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So that property originally was school property that was given back to the general government more than ten years ago. And then we've been talking about it since Mystic Valley came in, looking for, you know, looking to utilize some federal grants. And we helped get carp and drive put in there, which is the access to that. But you got to remember, this is not a forty B. This is going to be a development in there that's going to have setbacks that are not ten feet from property lines. We're not going to stuff something down the neighborhood's throat. So we want to be able to figure out how many, how many units can be supported in the property and then help design something that will meld with the property, with, with, with the neighborhood. You know, the, the way we would like to see affordable housing done, not just build a whole bunch of houses, make eighty percent of them, seventy-five percent of a market rate, and then take seventy percent off market rate and, and have folks move in there at still exorbitant numbers, you know, cost numbers. So that's, that's my thought. That's, that's what we've been looking at for years and it has been years.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Okay. Are we, yeah, um, thank you. That's a clarification on affordable housing terms. It's not necessarily bad words.
That's right.
All right. Are we, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion, Mr. Studo?
Madam Chair, I recommend, excuse me, I move to recommend a town meeting. Article seventeen, conveyance of town-owned land for affordable housing development, three carpenter drive.
Okay, Mr. Studo has a motion to recommend. Any second. Hearing none, motion fails. Do we have another motion? Anyone else want to make a motion? Nobody.
I move to recommend removal of Article seventeen.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary to remove Article seventeen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Studo. Any further discussion? Hearing, seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez? Mrs. Gonzalez, I was aye, right?
Yes.
Manu Pelley is no, so it's going to be removed. So one item removed from the article. So as it is written, do we have a motion? Our next motion, I think, is to vote to sign, right, Mr. Gilberto?
Correct.
We have a motion, Mr.?
Madam Chair, I move to sign the October town meeting warrant.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion here? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez? Chair is aye. Okay. And now, thank you all who were here to help explain those things. I thought that was a big help for us this evening. Next order of business is?
The administrator has his hands up, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm not, I'm going back and forth between the packet and the, and the Brady Bunch grid here, so.
I'm doing the same, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We do have a second motion that was in the attachment that I emailed the board members at seven o'clock. And it's a motion to offer a recommendation on the time, date and location for the October town meeting, that it, that, that the meeting be moved to October third, Saturday, October third, at eleven o'clock A M at one eighty-nine Park Street.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gilberto. And I think when we discussed that previously, we were wanting you to check with Attorney Klein. Can we move it? We, we know that the legislation allows thirty days continuance, but can we move it back, back those two days?
Correct.
And that might be one of the reasons why you had him join in us, so.
It was. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Attorney Klein, did you, did you have anything input on that?
Yeah, so, you know, we did review the special legislation and obviously there's no, you know, interpret, there's no precedent or, or official court interpretation of this. But we do think the, the best way to read the legislation with your charter provision is you, you can continue the meeting and within that definition move it closer to days. Obviously, you know, provided you're giving correct notice, which you would, if, if the moderator decides. Obviously, it'll be up to the moderator to do that by declaration. And we do think he has the authority within the emergency.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Klein. And, uh, Mr. Gilberto, anything else you want to add to that? I may?
Yes, the only thing I would add is if the vote, you know, the board does vote favorably, the, the moderator's next discussion would be with the Board of Health. I believe that they will be meeting on Thursday, September tenth. And as we did for the August meeting, we are timing to very quickly turn around getting the, the warrant to the printer that evening. It would go out telling people in the mail that the meeting would be October third, even though it would technically be the October fifth meeting. And it would also include information regarding the warrant article informational hearings that we've been holding before the meeting under your leadership for dealing with a more extensive back and forth and discussion. So we would be, we, our plan is to get all of that out in the printed version of the warrant and in the mail and into the homes of our residents two weeks ahead of the Saturday meeting date. And with about a week's notice ahead of the virtual warrant article hearing, which would be on September twenty-eighth.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, do you want to add anything to that discussion? You're here. You're on mute, though.
Yeah, I, I think if we look at the, if we look at the calendar, you know, we don't have a lot of, a lot of dates open based on elections and the commitments of the Land Clerk's office. And from the discussion we had last week as a group with Board of Health, Public Safety, Police and Fire, Mr. Gilberto, I, I think it makes a lot of sense to try to get it done on October third.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. All right, so do we have, do we have any other comment question? Do we have a motion?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to recommend to the town moderator that the October annual town meeting scheduled for Monday, October fifth, twenty twenty, be held on Saturday, October third, twenty twenty, at eleven A M at one eighty-nine Park Street.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr., Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez? Are you, Mrs. I, and, and Manu Pelley is aye. Thank you. Okay. Our next order of business now, now is the vote to sign the town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your input.
Thank you, Darren.
Darren.
You're welcome. Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, through you, Darren, if you could hang for just a second. So we've, I believe that the board just voted to sign the warrant and that was done purposely. We're asking the board to sign the warrant for the date that was called on the evening at the hearing in January. The moderator then changing that date basically after the fact, but before the printed warrant is set. So I, I believe you read the first warrant to sign the warrant, the, the first motion, sign the warrant already, right?
Yep.
So there shouldn't, I don't, Darren, correct me if I've got that procedure wrong, but I think that's what we discussed. The warrant would be signed and then a recommendation made to change the date to October third.
Correct. You, you make a recommendation that the moderator, that the moderator changed the date to October third.
Okay, so we just did that, but when you print this warrant, aren't you printing the right date on it?
The, the warrant.
All purpose of, no, why not?
No, no, you're absolutely right. So by, by law, the warrant that will get printed will be dated October fifth, twenty twenty, just like the, the August warrant was actually dated May eleventh, twenty twenty. But what we will do is we will put on the, on the front cover page a note that tells the community that the meeting will be held October third. And in parentheses, it will say, continue schedule from October fifth.
Oh, I see, okay.
We're gonna, it's, it's technically an October fifth meeting, but it will be held on October third. And we, I think that that worked for the August meeting. I think that we had success with getting information to people, in my opinion. And so we're trying to structure the deadlines and the benchmarks of consulting with everybody accordingly to allow that to happen again.
Yeah, we, the, we, we were looking at the, the best way to combine all the different notice deadlines, printer deadlines, charter. We, we were looking at the best way to combine all the different notice deadlines, printer deadlines, charter provisions. And that's why we decided this was the easiest procedure.
Madam Chair, through you. If it's possible for the board members to plan to come to the Town Hall to sign the warrant on Thursday in the presence of the Town Clerk, that would be helpful and appreciated. I would ordinarily ask you to come tomorrow to do so, but as you know, we have the preliminary election, the state primary taking place. And the clerk has got some things to tend to on Wednesday, I believe, related to that. So if it's possible to have the board members to plan to come in on Thursday, that would be greatly appreciated.
What time? Anytime?
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Anytime, Mr. Gilberto.
You can maybe just send an email to the members and let them know that's what you need, okay? Okay. So we're all set with the votes on the warrant and vote to sign the October Town Meeting warrant?
Yes. You've taken the vote.
We're on to the next order of business, which is to receive the rail trail update from the Land Utilization Committee. Thank you, Attorney Klein.
Thank you. Good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, thank you. My understanding is that there was going to be a meeting of the Land Utilization Committee to discuss the status of the bike trail between our last meeting and this evening, and I believe that happened a week and a half or so ago. Mr. Hertz, who is sort of the principal involved in the planning effort on the bike trail, is here this evening to provide an update. There may be a desire on his part to provide a further update to the Select Board and Executive Session at a future meeting as well. But I think at least an initial update is what was in the offering for this evening.
Mr. Hertz, welcome. Thank you for sticking with us in this.
It did, it did. It did take a little longer than I had planned. Is it, may I share my screen?
I can set that, yep.
Okay. Share. Okay. All right. Can people see my screen?
Yes.
All right. So there's two things that I want to discuss tonight. One is to give you an update of where we are on the feasibility study. And that's important. But even more important is to discuss the next step. As you well know, we were fortunate to get the approval of Town Meeting almost two years ago now for the fifty-five thousand dollars for the feasibility study. We were equally blessed to get an additional forty-five thousand dollar grant from the state in June for basically the next phase. We applied, I had applied for a grant a year and a half ago. If we had gotten that in two thousand and nineteen, it probably, it would have been used to offset the original feasibility study. I applied for it again in two thousand and twenty, and it came through. But most of the money, most of the work has already been done on the feasibility study. So it really needs to be used for the next phase of the project. And I'd like to, before, in today's presentation, I'd like to walk you through what we want to use that money for and get your buy-in on that. Because really, and there's some urgency, because that money needs to be used by the end of June, two thousand and twenty-one, or it just won't be, it won't be available to us. But let me walk you through where we are on the feasibility study. So the good news is, is that the basic plan for the trail, as it was envisioned back in two thousand and seventeen when we started this, really hasn't changed. And the challenges and the benefits that we pictured back then are pretty much the same now as what we thought they would be three years ago. The basic trail, the overall trail, really starts over in Peabody. We're talking about buildings, we'll start in North Reading, but it's really about connectivity. We're looking at a trail that really would start where the Peabody Trail ends, which is here, which is here in Peabody, the Independence Greenway in Peabody. This is a paved trail. I'll show you, I can show you some. Here's the, the Peabody Trail, there's a picture of it. That's the end of the Peabody Trail. It stops, it stops right where Bostick is in Peabody. And then it's the old Salem to Lowell Railroad. The Bostick plant is right there. And then it crossed, the railroad bed crosses through Bostick, through property that's owned by the Linfield Center Water District. This is all Linfield Center Water District land. And then it crosses into North Reading, land that's owned by Danvers, right there. That property is owned by Danvers, some land that's owned by a woman up in Andover. Crosses into land that goes across a bunch of people's backyards, across people's private yards around Park Street, into Railroad Avenue, across some property, auto body part shop, into Ipswich River Park, into some town land, South Parish Park, North Parish Park, rather, runs along Park Street, and into the Masons, along the Masons land. And then over, across twenty-eight, back by the, excuse me, I'm not twenty-eight yet, down to Chestnut, down to Chestnut Street. And then, and then, and then into Long Martins Brook, across the swamp, down to Chestnut, down to twenty-eight, down by the old twenty-eight, down by Stop and Shop Gas. You can see, you can see where the, there's pieces of the old railroad bed in there. Ran across, I think it ran across what's twenty-eight at grade in the old days. Runs across behind where the post office processing center is, back where some of the power lines are. Runs, runs along the power lines. And then you can see here, you can see this line here where this is the rail bed. This is North Reading in here, and it runs, and then it runs into Wilmington. The stretch, the stretch of this North Reading in here, North Reading has some water, some water pumping stations in here. And Wilmington has some North Reading pumping, has some pumping stations in here. Now, the, what the feasibility study has done, they've gone through and they've done detailed maps of the whole length of the trail in North Reading. They've, they've walked almost all of it, and they've done detailed maps, topographic maps. These maps are not particularly easy to read on a computer screen. If I was, if we were all in a room together and we had, I could roll these out on big tables, they'd be a lot easier to read. So what I'm showing you here is from the western edge. So this is Route sixty-two in Wilmington. So the consultant is proposing to actually take the trail all the way to Wilmington. So they have, you have a logical parking area on a major street to start it. We've had discussions with the Town Administrator in Wilmington and the DPW people in Wilmington, and they're quite open to letting it start in Wilmington. This is the old rail bed in Wilmington. The Town of Wilmington owns the right-of-way to the rail bed. This is North Reading in, the rail bed in North Reading. North Reading has access to the rail bed here. It owns access to the rail bed. It has access through Wilmington, uses the rail bed, in fact, to get to its, to its pumping stations. This is actually not a particularly hard area to develop. I don't think this is going to be a particularly problem area in building the, in building the trail. The trail then proceeds along what really is pretty easy land. Then it goes into land that's owned by the electric company. What's interesting is the electric company has rules. They won't let you build a rail trail that runs parallel to their, parallel to their lines, but they will allow you to run a rail, a bike trail that runs across their land. We originally thought that we would run it, there are ATV tracks that run under their lines. So we thought the easiest way would be just to follow the ATV trails. But since they won't let you run them under the lines, we, now their trail is we're going to cut across their, cross their land and go into the post office. We originally had heard that the post office is a very difficult organization to negotiate with. But we've had, we had a couple of conversations with people down in Washington, and they basically said they have a process for doing these things. And we looked at, we showed them the map, and they said, yeah, you know, here's what you need to do. It looks like if, as long as you run it right along the edge of the property in an area of the land where they're really unlikely to ever want to expand the building, they probably can, we can probably do something for you. So we're still reaching out to them. But it looks like as long as we cut across the power company's land and then go along the periphery of the post office land, it's probably a doable, a doable situation. Then, of course, we have, we have to get across Route twenty-eight. But, you know, again, I think it's probably not, it's probably a doable thing, probably crossing where the lights are for where, you know, the Stop and Shop gas station are, is. But, you know, again, that, there's a number of different options. That still needs to be figured out. Then, on the other side of twenty-eight, there's some public land that's actually owned by the MBTA. That's not, that's not a big, that's not a big issue. It gets in, it's all kind of wet in here. This area in here is all town-owned land. And then it gets into, gets into some private loan land that we're going to need some easements. But this is all very wet. This isn't particularly useful land to anyone. Come around. And, and this is, this land in here is owned by the Masons. We met with the Masons, and they're very accommodating. They're, they thought it was a great idea, and they're very open to giving free access to the land back here. And then it would come out around the Masons land, and then it would actually run along the public right-of-way along Park Street. The railroad, in fact, ran right along Park Street there. Historically, it ran, ran right along the edge of the road. So it would run, the trail would run right along the edge of Park Street and then jog back in. And this area here, just to the east of Chestnut Street, this is all town-owned land, and that's the actual rail bed. You can, you can see it, when you're coming on Park Street or Chestnut Street, you can actually see the rail bed in there. This is, this is all town-owned land. That's all town-owned land. You can actually, you can see in the map where the banner rail bed is. So, I mean, he's put, he's put that in there. So this is, now you're, now you're in Ipswich River Park. So it's, you know, once you're in Ipswich River Park, it's, you know, we can do whatever we want in terms of running the trail. The trails are all sort of existing. So, so now, when you get out of Ipswich River Park, it gets a little bit complicated getting, getting across Havre Street. There, there's an auto body shop here. The thinking is, the actual rail bed runs technically through the parking lot of the auto body shop. But there's probably a way around. There's some town-owned land on the outside of the swamp, and there's probably a way around the auto body shop. It's still land that needs to be worked out. But I think there's probably a way around it. And then you're, then you're on Railroad Avenue. And so we're going down Railroad Avenue. There's some town-owned land here, and there's some, there's some, we talked to some landowners in here, and there's some openness to doing some property swaps here. And then, and then we get to probably, to some of the more difficult areas, which is getting across Park Street here. There's some, there's some tricky areas in land right around here on Park Street. And then, and then, this is probably the most difficult area is getting through Park Street. And then, once, once you get through Park Street, then we're back, we're back here behind Park Street, back into the area where there's the abandoned rail bed. This area back up in here, this is the former Smith property. And then we're back over into, into Linfield and going back towards Bostick and towards, and towards Peabody. So just to give you, just to give you an idea of what some of this area looks like. So I showed you, so that's what, you know, that's what, that's what a rail bed, rail trail looks like when it's actually all done. You know, the Peabody, Peabody was lucky, because the Salem to Lowell Railroad was an active railroad as far as Bostick until about nineteen eighty. So the railroad serviced that Bostick plant until about nineteen eighty. But the railroad, the railroad from Bostick all the way to Lowell stopped in, I think, the late twenties. It stopped almost a hundred years ago. So that's why the property was all sold off west, west of Middleton. So you can see, as you, as you move, you move west of the rail bed. So this is what, this is what that, the rail trail looks like, the rail bed looks like as you go. There's the Bostick plant, and you can see the, you can sort of see what the, what the abandoned trails look like. So there are trails.
Mr. Hertz, I may have missed this, and I'm, I don't want to disrupt your presentation. Is there a lot more of the display that you have? And you may have mentioned this, and is this accessible online so that we can review it? Because I don't think it was part of our package. I just looked again.
No. I, I mean, this is a very large file. I hadn't, I hadn't sent it. It's a very large file. I can, I can probably figure out some way of, I can figure out some way of getting it to you.
Okay. Did you have, was it, okay, I'm sorry.
I can speed it up. I, the most important.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I think that it would be great. I can see what you're sharing, and my colleagues can. It would be great to just have, if it's possible, to have this, so we can kind of sift through it in more detail and take a look at. It's a lot of work that you put into this.
Okay. Yeah. I have to figure it out, because it's a very large file. I'll figure it out with Mike, a way of, a way of getting it to you. It's.
Dropbox.
Yeah. I can, I can, I'll figure out some way of getting to. But what I, I just wanted to give you an idea of showing you what the trail looks like. So, you know, we have this beautiful, these beautiful trails in the woods. I mean, this is what, this is what's in North Reading right now that's just not accessible, in North Reading. And even in, even in the, even in the Smith property. And and even in even in the even in the Smith property, this is what it looks like in in Riverwood in the Smith property. So the the whole idea behind building these rail beds, the 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 trails, is to is to make these these things accessible. So I know it's getting late, so I I what I what I want to discuss is 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 what to do So the the this, we we have the $45,000, and for the project to move forward, you know, with the feasibility study is 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 basically done. The 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 next step for anything further to go forward, originally, when I presented the town meeting, the one of the ideas was we could focus on the North Reading, the North Reading portion of the trail and maybe not worry so much about the Linfield and Middleton sections. Note, we we it was always known that it was going to be difficult to cross Park Street because of the properties involved, and that maybe we just focus more on on the North Reading piece. The the challenge came when we we reached out to Mass DOT to find out what the terms would be under which we would be eligible to receive the grants for 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 the rail trail, given that it was going to be so expensive, since so much of the trail is in wetlands, and it it could be four, five, six, seven million dollars to build it. And Mass DOT said that one of their primary considerations is connectivity, that when they look, they look at towns, that they're interested in towns, connect the trails that connect to other towns. So their primary consideration in giving North Reading funding for its trail would be connectivity to the to the Peabody Trail, that if 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 the it's not impossible, but it would be very unlikely for North Reading to get any sizable funding for its trail as an orphan trail for a for a North Reading trail, just just sitting in North Reading without connectivity. And that it would be very important that when they go, when North Reading goes and applies for the grant, that it shows that the easements are all in place and that 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 the that the connections to Linfield and Middleton are such not necessarily done, but the plans are well underway to having them done.
So those easements are the thing. Those are the things you wanted to talk with us in executive session about at another meeting?
The yes, the 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 details on those easements. So the 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 purpose of using the $45,000, we don't have to go into the details of the easements, but the purpose of the $45,000 is to hire attorneys and appraisers and to begin negotiations with the property owners to determine what it is that that it might take to to secure those easements. Regardless of regardless of how that happens, that those discussions need to take place. And I certainly don't. I personally, I don't want to be the one doing those negotiations. They they need to be. They need to be done at arm's length. And it was actually, I I actually, originally, I had a different thought on how to do the what to use those $45,000 for, and and I was discussing it with Mike and and and, you know, we talked about it, and and it's really critical. There is no project without those easements because this there is. There's three. There's there's two absolutely critical easements and really a third that's 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 pretty near critical. There's a couple. There's. There's a handful of others that I don't think are going to be a problem because they're so far from anybody's home that that and they're on wetlands that I just can't see as being any pretty problem. But there's there's two or three that that are absolutely essential, that there won't be. There won't. The project wouldn't happen without. So so what I what I want to, what I want to find out at this point is is whether this makes sense to the board and whether I would have your support to use the $45,000. Because I I would need town council or or a council. I would need Mike's support on this. I would need to work closely with Mike on something like this.
Okay. Any comments, questions for Mr. Hertz? Any thoughts? Any? And I know it's getting late, but.
I can just say to help people out, I've been following this project since it started, and Phil and I have worked closely on it. So Phil is very thorough in his analysis, and his recommendations are solid and, you know, so, you know, I if we're trying to find efficiency of time, I wouldn't be going down the path of does he know what he's talking about? Because I think he absolutely does, and I I've ridden on the trails and I've seen them. So it's a good effort. But we do need to have a. He does need to get our support or some other discussion, probably at an executive session where we can discuss this more privately, and so he knows what to do with that money. It's and again, it's he's got a certain amount of timeline to be able to spend this money to make the project go forward.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? Mrs. Gonzalez? You're mute. You're on mute. I just want to thank you. I think we're very lucky to have you, and I appreciate.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else have some comments?
I do. I think Madam Chair froze up, though. I think the liberty of Phil, thank you very much for all that you're doing here. I know it's a labor of love for you, for sure.
I'm sorry. I did. I apologize. I I could. I could hear Mrs. Gonzalez thank you, and then it stopped, so.
But again, I know it's a labor of love for you, Phil, and in all the effort that you're putting into this, it's amazing. You know, this is. This was some people's ideas, and you're bringing it to fruition. And to Rich's point, I mean, I know he's been following it very closely. You know, I trust your judgment. If you think this is what needs to be done, and the best expenditure of funds is to move in that direction, then, you know, by all means, you know, I fully embrace your effort to work with the town administration, the town administrative town council to fight out about those three critical pieces and see if it could actually come to fruition. So again, thank you for all your efforts and again, your your God said at this point, I'll tell you right now, and pushing this thing forward.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
All right, since I I I think we will. We probably will need to talk in executive session because this could.
Okay, Mr. Studo, any questions, comments?
Um, no, I think it's a. I think it's a great idea. I mean, Mr. Hertz, you and I have never met or spoken, but this is it. It looks thorough, and I I feel that every community that has a bike trail seems to love it. You know, I you I've used the Peabody. I grew up in Malden, so we used to go to the one that goes Arlington all the way to God knows how far north that one goes, I think, right? Yeah, so I think it's great, and, you know, there's the land there just seems coordinating the land. So, yeah, no, thank you again for doing this. I know it's, you know, but one question I do have, how many, if completed the way you think it may be, and I know it could get changed, what would the length of that portion be, our portion from Peabody to Wilmington?
Well, the 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 north, well, from the North Reading portion from the Wilmington line to the to the Linfield line would be about four miles.
Okay.
So, I mean, I mean, but if the it it it's almost endless. I mean, you're connecting, you know, it would. The railroad would go from, if you figure from Wilmington, it would go all the way to the Salem Harbor.
Okay.
And then it would. It goes all the way up almost to Newburyport. And then it it will go. I think it's you should be able to get almost to Boston.
Okay, because I know. Yeah, I know that. I know the one in Peabody ends at that playground school. Yeah, I think it's just a playground. If you do the whole thing from Linfield line, where you talked about Bostick, that entrance.
Yeah, well, but but they're built. They're putting a bridge over Route 1.
Okay.
They they have the funding. Matter of fact, the same the same engineering firm that did my feasibility study, they're they're putting. They're building the bridge so that it right now it stops at the playground, but it's going to actually continue right over Route 1 and then connect all the way to Salem.
Love being so.
So.
Anything else, Mr. Studo?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Okay, and so I don't think it's on for a vote, but I think it's on for a vote of consensus of. I think you have a consensus of the unanimous consent to the board, at least, to move it forward, right? Am I? I don't want to speak for everyone, but everyone's nodding.
Okay, that.
Yeah, so I guess, working with Mr. Gilberto, if if this does require an executive session, that would be we we can set that up. I don't know how soon, but I know that this is a near and dear to you, so the sooner the better for that. We'd have to check with town council, which he's pretty readily available whenever we need him, but he may put someone more specific on this, because sometimes they do with the land use and planning items.
I'll 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 work with Mike. I mean, the most critical thing right now is to get the app, get this contract done with the state. So I'll I'll do a draft, Mike, and I'll send it to you, and then you we can because I I'll need to understand how it gets funded and all of that. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. That's great.
Thank you, Phil.
Looking forward to seeing you again soon.
Great. I appreciate it.
Take care. All right, so we are on to the next agenda item. Sorry, just let me get back to the syllabus here. And the next order of business is appointments for Martin's Pond Committee. And I think we talked about this one as well previously. So, Mr. Studo, are there motions? I mean, in a in a previous meeting, we talked about filling this committee, getting these appointments squared away from people that were interested in being on this committee.
Mm hmm. Yeah, there's a motion.
All right.
Madam Chair, I moved the place in nomination, the following name for appointment as a member of the Martin's Pond Committee for a term to expire in December 31, 2022, Donald Skog. If I said that wrong, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mrs. Gonzalez, and we'll hear from Mr. Wallner. Mr. Wallner, you're the liaison, right?
Yeah, um, you know, I've met him. He's one of those people that's been fishing on the pond. I don't. I don't want to say daily, but on a fairly regular basis. He knows that pond almost better than anybody else I know. He knows what's going on. He knows the dynamics, and he's been working very well with the committee that exists because we have some people there who are very technical. It's a really. We're very fortunate to have him join the group, and he's a welcome addition to the group, and I strongly support him being a member of it.
Thank you, Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? Are we closing the nomination? We don't need to close nominations. It's only one person, right, Mr. Gilberto? On a nomination, it's a name, a name vote, so Mr. Wallner.
I. Oh, I'm sorry, Dot Skog.
Can you spell that? Spell that, Mr. Wallner?
I think it's S K O G, correct?
S K O O G.
Double double O.
Scout, okay. Mrs. Gonzalez.
Mr. Scout.
Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Scope.
Mr. Studo.
Mr. Scope.
And Manu Pelley is Mr. Scout. All right, so that's great. Mr. Wallner, do they have any other openings on that committee, or does that? Oh, they do. Mr. Gilberto's shaking. Any other openings, Mr. Gilberto? Two, okay.
Those two will be re-advertised in October, November for a part of our annual appointment process.
Oh, that's great. Okay. All right, next order of business is the we're ratifying an integrated contract. Our next two orders of business actually have to do with the North Reading Administrative Staff and the North Reading Library Staff Association. And I'll, Mr. Gilberto, you can take it away, but I'm because these were updated and all, you know, instead of memorandum of agreement attached to a contract, attached to an amendment, attached to an addendum, these were all part of the part of the agreement was to put them all into one integrated contract. So that I think the next two items, I think that's pretty pretty self-explanatory.
It is. That's correct. There are no new wage adjustments or benefit changes by virtue of this action, simply incorporating those documents as you referenced.
Making one contract, so it's one easily referenced document. So, Mr. Studo, do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move the ratifying sign, the integrated contract between the town of North Reading and the North Reading Administrative Staff for the period of July 1, 2018 through Ju- June 30, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary.
I.
Mr. Wallner.
I.
Mr. Studo.
I.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
I.
And Manu Pelley is I. Next contract, the next, Mr. Studo, do we have a vote?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move the ratifying sign, the integrated contract between the town of North Reading and the North Reading Library Staff Association for the period of July 1, 2018 through July 30, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary.
I.
Mr. Wallner.
I.
Mr. Studo.
I.
Mrs. Gonzalez. And Manu Pelley is I. Okay, the next order of business is our discussing our meeting schedule and strategic planning meeting, which it's can't believe it's already been. It's already time to do this again. I it's just this this year has gone by in a blink of an eye. So we did schedule, I thought, or at least our our board meetings. Mr. Gilberto, where we would typically, we would typically do this at the, we had it at the police station, but I'm assuming we're going to do this virtually.
Depends upon the board's pleasure. I was sort of thinking that that would be the case, but depending upon where we're at with any of the restrictions or guidance, if the board elected to do so in person, it could. We could find a room large enough to accommodate everybody and promote social distancing. But I I do think that if the board was open to it, we could also do it virtually.
Okay.
Does does. Did it get delivered, though?
That's what I was going to ask.
To each of you. Yeah, well, you know what? Deserve it, for sure. Quite a year.
I know. So it. Are there any proposed dates that you had in mind? I think we set up our meeting schedule, I believe, through December.
We did, yes. So me. Those meeting dates are all set, and they are on page four of the main meeting packet. Customarily, the board has had this meeting usually in the wake of the October town meeting. So it often, for whatever reason, it frequently ends up being a Wednesday or a Thursday night, but I don't, you know, I think the night can be determined based upon board member availability. So, you know, my suggestion would would be to consider having a meeting after the October town meeting.
Okay, so town meeting is the fifth, moved back to the third. So what's the board's pleasure in terms of the day? Mrs. Gonzalez?
Well, since we don't have to meet on the fifth, where we normally would have, that's open on the Monday night. Just a suggestion.
Does that work for everybody?
Which night is that? I'm sorry.
The fifth.
The fifth of October?
Yeah, it's what would have been the town meeting, so I already have it in my schedule.
Yeah. The only thing would be the only complication I see is if we can't do it on the third, you know, would we be? Would we still keep the fifth, or would we push it out further? That the request of the superintendent was that we not have it on a Monday through Thursday evening, only because of the the time required to sanitize afterwards. So I I don't see a scenario where we would where we would be recommending the meeting occur on Monday evening.
You mean the town? You're talking about the town meeting, not not our strategic plan. I'm sorry. It is getting late, so I'm getting a little confused. Okay, so we want to you. We want to just earmark. Okay, so we want to, you, we want to just earmark that date, Mr. Wallner. So would you, would you be okay to earmark?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. No, no problem.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea. We all, we all had it, we already had it booked anyway. If that works for everybody, does that work for you, Mr. Studo?
Yes, with a big asterisk.
Oh, that's right. He's having a baby.
I know.
I'll, I'll, I'll figure it. I mean, I'll, you know, as long as, uh, as long as I'm not at Beth Israel or, you know, in an ambulance, I think I can pull it off, especially remotely.
Yeah. Strategic planning and juggling, that's what you'll be doing.
Correct.
All right. Mr. Leary, does that work for you too?
Sure.
All right. That's great. Why don't we just keep that, keep that plugged in and we'll handle that? Okay, and that's actually, that is actually advertised as a, a regular meeting of the board, obviously, where members of the public attend, I think.
Yep.
You know? So will you tell us later date, what, where and when, where, what the plan is for that, Michael, and we keep it into that evening, so?
Yeah, Michael, I'll talk to him down there and we'll think that will make some more sense.
All right. That's great. Okay. And the town administrators report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a note, uh, that DPW has been informed by the vendor who normally does our household, household hazardous waste day. If they're not offering the program during this calendar year, um, DPW is looking into alternatives as well as a potential special drop-off day for rigid plastic, propane tanks, uh, as well as paper shredding. And then any information you can share, once it becomes available, will be publicized in the community. I know there's some residents out there that have been asking about when that opportunity will come up. It, it looks like we won't be able to, to address, um, you know, paint and other chemicals, but hopefully some of the other, um, special items that they, as they're denoted, can be, um, can be disposed of. And we'll keep the community updated on our efforts on that. Um, as I mentioned at our meeting on Thursday evening, DPW and police are looking into a potential, um, grant eligible construction project to add an accessible pathway on the west side of the middle high school property. Excuse me. I'm informed today that the, uh, area that they're zoning in on will be the end of Need Street where there is an existing E-road, excuse me, E-road, um, where there's an existing cut-through, um, to the property. So I know that they're sort of zeroing in on that as the, uh, preferred location. Um, we'll be submitting a grant application, um, that may not necessarily be contingent upon that specific project in case we run into any challenges, um, you know, with the design or with, uh, outreach within the neighborhood. Uh, but that is the area that's being looked at for that project. Um, I'll also note, and I uploaded this to the packet, and I'm sure that the town clerk will be reporting through the local media. Uh, early voting concluded on Friday at one o'clock. Friday did end up being our busiest day, even though it was, um, one of the shorter days when this closing at one o'clock. Then there was a total turnout of three hundred and eighty-three voters over the, um, six days that early voting was held for the primary election. Um, that represents three point three-two percent. Um, election day is tomorrow, and the polls will open at Saint Teresa Church at seven o'clock AM. And finally, I know I did not offer anything in the COVID update, but I think it is important to note that, um, there is an effort underway by Parks and Recreation to try to assemble some sort of a remote learning supervision program for, um, North Reading, um, public school students, um, on the days that they are in the remote learning schedule from the hybrid schedule. And there was a meeting that was held today with the superintendent of schools and with representative of the school committee and Parks and Recreation. Um, you know, we continue to be optimistic, we'll be able to pull something together, although finding the appropriate space has been a bit of a challenge. Um, that work is continuing and as soon as there's something to report to the community, um, it will be publicized. So I probably should have talked about that earlier under the COVID update and I apologize. And that concludes my report for this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Mrs. Gonzalez?
What were the times? I know the time was changed for voting. Do you, do you know that offhand?
The preliminary election, that, that, that time was not changed, seven o'clock AM to eight o'clock PM. It was a town election that was changed.
So tomorrow's till eight PM?
Tomorrow, seven AM to eight PM.
It was just the town election that was shortened.
Okay.
The state and federal are all set. Seven AM to eight PM.
Okay. Any other questions? Good. Now we're on to board member reports. Mr. Wallner?
I think I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Gonzalez?
You mean old and new business?
I meant old and new business, yes. I mean, it's kind of a second opportunity for board member reports. I'm sorry, Mrs. Gonzalez.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
Uh, question on Mill Street property. How we doing? You know, I know it's getting lost in the shuffle here, but we've got an asset that we should be disposing of. We've got a house sitting there that's vacant and, uh, how we doing and what's the timeline?
Um, so I, I'll need to check with the water superintendent on where the status is. And I feel like that was the answer I had last time, two weeks, uh, two months ago when it came up, but, uh, I think it's something we should talk about and probably talk about in our water, wastewater. Um, because I think that we're pretty close to being able to round this out and issue a request or proposal to sell the property. Um, it's just a matter of us getting over that hump.
Okay. And then, um, what's being done to ensure, um, timely processing of mail-in ballot applications and the ballot themselves for the November third election? Uh, we've had lots of discussion over the last two or three weeks.
Sure. Oh, there's a, there's a few, uh, few things that have, uh, that have taken place, um, one of which is, um, you know, we've redirected the incoming calls to the town clerk's office, which, um, yeah, is substantial. Most people who are calling to town hall will, um, will, will dial the town clerk's office. So those calls will be filtered through, um, through my office right now, where we have a bit of capacity to take them and that, that's helping with the call volume. Um, you know, for the past several weeks, um, probably four weeks now, we've had additional, um, staffing that's been brought in, um, the former election workers of the town clerk has hired, um, to help process a lot, um, ballots moving, um, moving through the early voting. And, um, you know, we were able to, I think, pretty quickly through the town clerk's office, catch up on the backlog of requests for, um, ballots and get, uh, get them out over the course of the, a week, two weeks ago. Um, we did get some reports of, you know, taking additional time for ballots to be delivered in the outgoing mail. Um, and the secretary of state's office obviously encouraged people to consider returning them, uh, in person to the extent possible. You happen to do so on a day we installed this, uh, dedicated drop-off box, which some of you have seen on Facebook or at the town hall, and it's got quite a bit of activity. Um, the town clerk has been moving through the ballots as they come in to, and enter them. And, um, as I, uh, understand it, they'll be run through, um, the machines on, uh, on election day tomorrow, um, in order to, to do the tally, um, once, uh, once the, the voting is ended. Um, so we've added some capacity. Um, the town clerk and I, you know, I think have additional conversations that we'll have with regard to, um, the November election, how to manage that, that workload. I think one advantage that we'll have, um, is that we've gotten, um, the cards were all due back in, um, pretty early, so a lot of people jumped on the cards and sent them in, um, to us. So I think that component of people asking for the ballot will be reduced significantly, but there'll be a much higher turnout, um, that we'll be dealing with in conjunction with that, along with the extended election period. So I think that's the update to the extent I can provide right now, um, based on the past few weeks.
So, I know that the, um, you know, th- there's only so much that's within our control. I just want to ensure that what is within our control is handled, you know, efficiently and process-wise, you know, done on a little more timely basis than what was handled. Um, and I, and I understand all the challenges that we're, that we're confronted with, but I think we could have done a, a little bit better and I'm sure that we're going to be better prepared for November, but, um, so I'll, I'll be checking in anyway, just to see how, what, what the processes are going to be going forward. Um, so Mill Street, that, um, again, uh, I just want to briefly address a comment that was made earlier in relation to me, uh, promoting conspiracy theories last, last meeting. Um, I, I don't, uh, I don't engage in conspiracy theories, you know, and there's no theory here, these are facts, as far as, uh, definitely, definitely not conspiracies, you know? There, there are people conspired, there are people conspiring, you know, to distract on the issues, to distract on the issues, to press votes and, um...
That's what you said.
And ignore the facts. So, uh, that being the, the, the case, uh, I'm not, I'm not, I do not engage in conspiracy theories, just in facts and, uh...
Facts out there.
What's in front of our, what's in front of our face. So we have a master of distraction and, uh, people aren't aware of it and...
Why don't we talk about more?
Then we're going to, again, just encourage people to vote, vote tomorrow. I'm encouraging people again to, to vote tomorrow and vote in November and, um, if they're going to vote by mail, you know, get their ballots in early, make sure that they count it. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you.
Miss, okay, now I have two hands raised. Mrs. Gon- Mrs. Gonzalez?
I'd just like to add that I have the utmost confidence in fiber stats that everything will run very smoothly and efficiently.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Gilberto, did you, were you, did you have your hand raised?